All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 4th, 2022, regular meeting of the Board of Finance. My name's Lori Charlton. I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, where it stands, nation, visible, liberty, justice for all.
Before we get into tonight's agenda, a reminder for members of the public, you are encouraged to send comments during or after the meeting to the following email, BOF@FairfieldCT.org. Please remember to include your name and address in your email. For members of the public who have called in to listen or joined the WebEx via your computer, you're muted and you will not be heard by board members, and there will be no live public comment until called for by the chair during the meeting. At that time, any member of the public who wishes to provide public comment that's pertinent to tonight's agenda will be given an opportunity to do so and provided instructions on how you can be heard. Our agenda tonight consists of two discussion items. The first relating to internal audit activity for this past calendar year, 2021, and the second relating to an update on the remediation of audit findings identified during the special DPW audit that was commissioned by this board as a result of the fill pile incident and originally delivered to us in May of 2020. Our only voting item tonight is the approval of minutes. Before we dive into item three on the agenda, I just want to provide an update on committee assignments. At our last organizational meeting in December, I had asked board members to let me know if their interest in serving on any of the standing or select committees, and based on that feedback, these are the committee assignments. Audit Committee, Ms. Leclair, Mr. Matola, Ms. Charlton. Budget Committee, Mr. DeWitt and Ms. Marmian. Fund Balance Committee, Mr. Curly, Mr. Stark, Mr. Walsh. Senior and Disabled Tax Relief, Mr. Curly, Mr. DeWitt, Ms. Marmian. And Purchasing Policy Select Committee, Mr. DeWitt, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Stark. I think that accommodates everyone's wishes or at a minimum first choices as they were expressed to me. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, if if anyone has any concerns or changes their mind about anything, you can also feel free to email me after after tonight's meeting, but thank you to everyone for stepping up, and we'll plan to provide time in our future agendas for updates from from each of the committees as appropriate. Okay, moving on to item three, to hear and discuss the internal audit report. We have with us Ms. Connie Saxel, the Internal Auditor for the town. Ms. Saxel, welcome. It's good to have you back. Can you just please let us know whether you'd like to walk through your entire presentation and then take questions, or would you prefer to take questions from the board throughout? Ms. Saxel? Are you muted?
I think she lost her audio. It looks like she's dialing back in.
Yeah, got it. All right, let's give her a moment. Connie, are you back? Okay, unmute yourself. I think you're muted, Connie.
There we go. I think we're good now. How, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, and I don't know if you heard me, but I I asked if you would please go ahead, you know, welcome, go ahead, and can you let us know whether you want to walk through your entire presentation first and then take questions, or if you would like us to, you know, or if you'd like to take questions throughout?
Um, you know what? I will talk about each audit, and then I will ask for questions and answer questions. How's that? And we'll continue on throughout the report that way. And sorry about getting kicked out of the meeting earlier, but I'm back. And good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. My name is Connie Saxel. I'm the Internal Auditor for the Town of Fairfield, and tonight I will be presenting a report on internal audit work conducted from January 1 through December 31, 2021. During this time, there were seven internal audits performed. Regular follow-up meetings were conducted throughout the year with town departments to monitor compliance with the DPW Independent Audit Report findings and recommendations. Four town policies were written, and a variety of financial and accounting work was conducted during this time as well. I also applied for and received FEMA reimbursement of approximately $700,000 related to storm damage expense from Storm Isaias. I'd like you to know that final internal audit reports are distributed to the Chief Fiscal Officer, the Department Head, and other appropriate parties directly involved in the audit after draft reviews and discussions are held. Recommendations made within the final internal audit reports are discussed with department heads and tracked internally on a spreadsheet matrix for compliance. Typically, department heads adhere and comply to the audit recommendations as soon as they are notified of them, and sometimes even before the audit is finalized. Once audit recommendations are followed up, audit recommendations are followed up through with emails to department heads, sample test work, and interviews with department staff, and onsite physical observation of office practices, as well as review of applicable reports and other associated documents. So I will briefly recap each of the audit reports for you and the recommendations made within the reports, and as I said, please feel free to ask questions after each one. The first one involved a follow-up on DPW Independent Audit Finding and Recommendations, APP-2, and that was from the DPW Independent Audit Report. This audit involved reviewing DPW office procedures surrounding the review and approval of employee timesheets by their direct supervisors prior to input and final approval for payment of payroll by their department head. My recommendation here was that employees who are assigned the responsibility of entering part-time employee hours into Munis for payroll purposes should ensure that the timesheets are properly reviewed and signed off by both the employee and their direct supervisor prior to input into Munis. This shall be designated as a signature and date approved on the timesheet. If there's no direct supervisor assigned, or if they're unavailable for any reason, then the department head should sign the timesheet prior to input into Munis. Department heads should perform regular cross-referencing of timesheets to Munis in order to ensure that they agree to the actual payroll that they approved. Do you have any questions on that one?
Oh, Mr. Walsh?
Good evening, Ms. Saxel. Happy New Year, and thanks for being here.
Thank you, same to you.
What does APP-2 stand for?
That is a reference to the Audit Finding and Recommendation in the Independent Audit Report. It stands for payroll. It is it's a code that the independent auditor is assigned to each finding and recommendation.
So that's in the Public Works Audit I'm looking at on page 26, and that's how, okay, I just wanted to confirm. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't the name of a report or something else like that, but thank you very much for that.
No, that came, yeah, that came directly from the independent audit.
Thank you.
I have a question, Ms. Saxel, if no one else does. Did your recommendations on this that supervisors, you know, make sure they're approving or approving and signing off on timesheets, did that come from any specific issue that you found? In other words, did you just see that timesheets weren't signed off, or did you see evidence that payroll had been input incorrectly?
I did not see that payroll had been input incorrectly, but I did, upon review of the timesheets, I noted on some instances, some timesheets were not properly signed off by a supervisor, and they should be to ensure that the employee did indeed work those hours and that they're properly approved by the supervisor. So I did speak to the clerk who inputs those hours, and she realized that she had made a mistake, and she agreed that she will ensure that the timesheets are properly signed off by the supervisors in the future.
Okay, and just as a follow-up, was it your understanding that they were actually reviewed and just not signed off, or they hadn't been reviewed?
I believe they were just sent directly to the clerk for her input, and they had not been reviewed by the supervisor. However, the employee did work the hours, and she was paid the correct payroll for those hours worked.
Thank you for that. Mr. Walsh?
Saxel, what time period was this over? Was this like the previous year? Was it over a number of years? Like, how long did you see?
No, no, it was, there was a specific timeframe that the independent auditor had sampled, and I believe it was about a 12-month period during 2019 that he had looked at, and there were some timesheets that hadn't been signed off by the supervisor, which prompted the audit finding.
Okay, I appreciate it. I'm just trying to get some sense of timing, so, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Saxel. You can keep going.
You're welcome. Okay, the second audit was the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Building, and that's located at 595 Turney Road. This audit involved the use and responsibilities of a town building by outside parties. The recommendations here were, the Town of Fairfield should be the authorizing and approving party who controls and determines the actual groups that may use the facility. The town attorney should establish formal written agreements between the town and each outside party authorized to use the building. The agreement should outline in detail the parameters surrounding the expectations, use, requirements, and other restrictions governing the building. Once formal agreements are signed, the town risk manager should obtain certificates of liability insurance from all parties who utilize the building. The Building Department should perform an inspection of all antenna which have been installed on the exterior of the building by outside parties for compliance with town codes and for safety purposes. Future modifications made to the building by outside parties should be conducted only with the review and approval by the town building maintenance supervisor. All modifications made to the building by outside parties should be performed only after obtaining proper building permits and should be subject to the applicable town inspection by the Building Department. A policy and procedure governing distribution and use of the keypad combination and key to the building should be established, and distribution to the authorized groups using the building. The building should be included in the town facility maintenance plan, and site cleanup and repairs should be considered in the near future to address rotted wood and missing roof shingles in order to preserve the physical integrity of the structure. The correct address of the building is 595 Turney Road, not 875 South Spenson Road, which should be reflected as such on the tax assessor field card. This will avoid future confusion when locating field cards, GPS site coordinates, engineering maps for mailing purposes, or cases of emergency where police and fire must respond to the site. The town should determine whether it is more cost-effective to winterize the building versus heating and electrifying the facility throughout the winter months when its use is limited or non-existent. The town has other buildings available for classroom instruction and meetings during the winter months, which are regularly used by outside party. Are there any questions?
Mr. Matola?
Okay. Oh, thank you for that update. That, I know where that building's located. To the extent that you know, Connie, what is the building used for?
The building is used by the U.S. Coast Guard. They call themselves the Flotilla Staff for the U.S. Coast Guard. But however, there are six groups currently that use the building for various uses. One of them is also the Fairfield Amateur Radio Association. There is also an ECC group. There are various groups that use the building. My concern when I went to visit the site was that there were several antenna on the building, and the particular day that I went, one of the antenna, which was approximately 25 feet in height, was swaying precariously in the wind, and I feared that it could possibly fall off the building and injure someone. So I did notify the Building Department. They went out, they did inspections. That antenna has been removed. There were roof shingles that had blown off the building. An interior inspection showed that there was some water leakage. The roof has been repaired. My other concern was the keypad combination, which is available to basically all these groups. But we have no rules or guidelines on how to use the keypad, or who's got use of the keypad and the key to the building, and we need formal written agreements with certificates of liability insurance.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question also. Should have asked probably 10 minutes ago. I I didn't know the purview of your audit before we joined this meeting, and so it would be helpful to me to understand your background, because obviously, I I was thinking financial audit, but you're way beyond that. So if you could just give me like a 30-second download on what?
I'll give you the rundown.
Okay, yeah.
So basically, I've been employed with the Town of Fairfield for over 30 years. I was appointed by the Board of Selectmen. My office is located in the Finance Department. I work under the direct supervision of the Chief Fiscal Officer. I have a degree in accounting, and I've worked in finance since 1991. I, my purview is, I am internal auditor, but I wear many, many hats. In terms of internal audits, my audits are usually based upon recommendations from requests from the First Selectwoman, the Chief Fiscal Officer, Department Heads, could be town employees, could be just items that I've seen through physical observation of town procedures. And basically, when I am notified of an area to audit, I basically am pretty much given free rein as to how deep I want to delve into something and look into it. And usually, it expands well beyond what the initial request was. This initially was, the request was to look into who was responsible to pay the bills for the building. And then it, obviously, upon delving deeper into it, you find a lot of other issues that need to be, you know, documented and, you know, notify management of these these issues.
That's really helpful. Thank you. Sounds like you're doing a great job.
Oh, thank you. And then I also do a plethora of accounting work. Lately, I've been doing FEMA reimbursements also to get reimbursement for the town. I did the COVID, I submitted COVID reimbursement to FEMA in the state of Connecticut, and, you know, that sort of thing. It keeps going on and on.
All right, thank you. Mr. Curly?
Yeah, just to follow up on that. Thank you, Connie. It's been helpful. I actually was under the impression that you were full-time internal auditor, so I'm curious about the, your time split between the internal audit work and the accounting work and the work you do on the reimbursement efforts.
Right. It varies from fiscal year to fiscal year, but primarily, I want to say maybe 30 to 40% of internal audit and the balance is probably financial and accounting-related and FEMA and that sort of thing. But then hopefully, after COVID's over, and hopefully no more financial, you know, federal disasters, you know, my time won't be dedicated to those types of things.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Matola?
Oh, just following up on some of those those questions. So approximately, right now, 30 to 40% is your, is actual internal audit work, and then you just described some of the other things you you do. I'm gonna, the first question I'm gonna ask you is, your position is establishment of the charter, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, and does your position have a job description, to your knowledge?
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to call point of order. What does this have to do with the agenda? And what, why is Ms. Saxel being questioned? I don't understand this. This has nothing to do with the agenda, has nothing to do with tonight's discussion. So I'd like to, I'd like to point, and I'm making, I'm making a point. I'm making a point of order. The Chairwoman addresses it, not you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Testani. I think the the question.
Questions. There's been several now.
Understand.
And this isn't the first time Ms. Saxel has appeared in front of us.
I understand.
I don't understand why she's being questioned.
What I think what's questioned is Ms. Saxel has laid out here in her in her review of what she's done over the past year, the various activities that she's spent her time on, some of which were internal allotted and a large number of which were not, and I think that.
Which leave interest in other meetings.
Correct, and that varies from year to year, and I think the board members are asking questions to try and understand how much time is being spent on internal audits. So, Mr. Matola, go ahead, please.
Thank you, and so you you have a job description, and I'm just, and the only reason why I'm asking is, does your job description require you to do these other things that you've described that you do? Or is that just over the last several years, this administration, past administrations, you've kind of have undertaken additional roles and responsibilities?
Yes, over the past years, the job has, I have taken on additional responsibilities, and the job description has been rewritten. I believe it was rewritten about, I want to say, five years ago, and to include other audit activity, other audit and accounting activities.
Okay, and then, hey, Jared, this is a question for you. Do you, do you believe, just you've been here for about a year or so, do you think your department needs some more help? And perhaps to free up Ms. Saxel to do more of the internal audits? Get some of those other things and responsibilities she's been doing, so she can maybe focus more of her time on internal audits? I'm just, has there been discussion with respect to that?
Like Connie said, you know, some of this is situational because of COVID, and so she's been asked to step up and do some some things that are required for us to get reimbursement for certain expenditures, and that has occupied some of her time. So, you know, to say that, to, in direct response to your question about whether or not, you know, we might need more help, I would say that this is a temporary situation that she's taking on these duties for. In addition to that, though, as you know, we requested, and the Board of Finance and other boards approved, the addition of a grant coordinator, which has has helped to take some some things away from Connie, and that that person is currently part-time. You know, there is the prospect of making it a full-time position. We've talked about that at past meetings. So, you know, there, we have taken some measures to help with the, with that work. But for the, for the most part, I would say this is, you know, it's a temporary situation, and that a lot, some of the things that Connie's been asked to take on have been, you know, related to the pandemic.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So you anticipate, God willing, that once things subside with COVID and the pandemic, that Ms. Saxel will be able to maybe spend more time doing internal audits? Is that the game plan right now you think is gonna happen?
Yeah, I would say so, that once, you know, once things are, get more back to normal, that she would be able to spend more time doing those, those tasks instead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for answering. Thank you, Ms. Saxel, also for answering my questions. That's all I have for now.
You're welcome.
No problem, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Matola.
I'll move on.
Yeah, Ms. Saxel, I think, I think there's always a lot of interest in what you have to say, and and you always, there's always substance to the reports that you provide, and so people are interested in more of it. So, please go ahead. Thank you.
Great. I believe, Jim, you had a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, if I missed you. Please, please go.
I just, I just, you know, I know we have a lot of new members here. But Ms. Saxel, you know, over the last 20 years, I've had the ability to work with you on various positions in town, and your position has been a position where you not only do internal auditing, but you're kind of pulled in different directions as the town sees fit. I mean, there was times when, like, First Selectman Flato had you do counts for elections 15 to 20 years ago. It's not part of your job, but you were pulled into it. And each First Selectman and Fiscal Officer, because of your financial expertise, sometimes you get pulled into something other than audits, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Day-to-day thing, so in this case, in the last year or so, it's been on COVID. It's been on the toxic mess that's been all over the fill pile, toxic mess that's been all over this town. You've had to do, and it's been with a lot of storms and hurricanes and.
Right.
Correct? Okay, so.
That is correct, yeah.
And that's always been part of your job, correct?
Yes.
All right. I just, I just want to give some background, so people know that you're just not an auditor. You're just not doing it every day, nine to five, eight to four.
Right, and as I said, it varies from year to year based on what's happening that year. And as you said, you know, the fill pile, that was time-consuming, gathering backup information for that. You know, the FEMA reimbursement, the Storm Isaias, now we have Storm Ida that happened as well. And, you know, so we try to balance the internal audit time between, I try to do a little bit of everything, to be honest with you. I have various tasks that I have and that I wear throughout the day. You know, try to keep a balance and do as much as I can with internal audit, as well as keep up with all the financial end of things as well.
One of those reasons that that occurs is that we just don't have extra staff in the Finance Department. Matter of fact, I think it's been proven that we have one of the smallest finance departments for a town of our size. And therefore, if somebody like you sometimes gets pulled away from an audit, maybe for a little bit, and and has to do something else, because the size of the Finance Department, the number of personnel, for the budget size we have, the number of transactions that this town has to do, and the size of the community is such that we try to run your department very, very lean. And that's been done for the last three, First Selectmen and Selectwomen, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right, yeah, thank you, Mr. Walsh. I think that's, those are good points, and maybe ones that can be re-explored during, at the appropriate time during the budget process. I think if there's, you know, a desire to devote more time to internal audit, then that means that there has to be resources made available to handle some of the other things that Ms. Saxel gets diverted to on a, on a regular basis. All right, Ms. Saxel, thank you, and I, I'm not sure which item you're on, but please.
So that was the Auxiliary Building. I'll move to the third audit, which is Solid Waste and Recycling: Debit Hallers with Outstanding Balances. And this audit involves outstanding. And this audit involves outstanding accounts receivable balances maintained by debit haulers over sixty days old. The customer aging report, and my recommendations were, the customer aging report should be reviewed and monitored for verification that haulers with outstanding balances are in conformance with town policy on a monthly basis. Active mon- monitoring of the customer aging report by the solid waste and recycling department is important in detecting haulers who are lagging in paying their debts on a timely basis and identifies possible future collection or bad debt issues. Debit account haulers should be notified of the town policy adopted in September twenty twenty. Further, the town should adhere to their policy and adopt a strategy for collecting outstanding balances over sixty days old owed by haulers. A possible solution is to send letters of collection to the affected haulers, apply interest to outstanding balances, and enforce stricter penalties to those who do not comply with town policy, including, but not limited to, denial of refuse licenses and denial of entrance into the facility in dumping privileges. And it's important to note that the town's solid waste and recycling department has formally adopted an, a policy, which was distributed to haulers in December, which states effective April first, twenty twenty-two, the town will enforce a policy whereby haulers who have delinquent balances in their credit accounts over thirty days will be subject to a one-point-five percent monthly interest penalty on these balances. Haulers, any hauler account who has maintained an outstanding balance of ten thousand in arrears for sixty days shall be denied dumping privileges until such account is paid in full. And the town will exercise their right to commence collection proceedings if the amount is not paid. So that, that's a basic recap of that audit. Um, are there any questions?
Questions from the board? Um, I, I have one, um, Ms. Saxel. So it sounds like we, we needed to, um, you know, get more diligent about these collection practices. What, what was the result of the audit? Did we have, you know, did we, did we end up collecting a bunch of past due money as a result of, um, you looking at this? Or where do we stand in terms of?
Right, and what happened, and again, in terms of wearing many hats, what happened was when we, our solid waste and recycling director retired, I stepped in and started doing the billing for solid waste and recycling for the debit haulers. And upon doing the billing, I noted that the balances were starting to la- increase and that the haulers' payments were not, uh, you know, meeting what they should be paying every month. So the balance was, balances were increasing. So I brought it to the attention of the, the CFO, and we adopted a policy. And, uh, I did take a look at it actually the other day, and I noted that the outstanding balance had decreased. Um, so I was pleased to see that, and the town is being proactive. And they did send out this policy to everyone, and now they're aware that we are going to be more stringent in our collection on, uh, outstanding debt.
Okay, so just to be clear, is this, is this billing process handled within the department? Or is it being handled by finance now?
It's being handled by the solid waste and recycling department.
Okay, and is that, um, o- optimal in your, in your opinion? Or did we, is this something that should be?
It, it does, it's fine, uh, they do have segregation, proper segregation of duties. They have one person collecting, um, the money. They have a different person who has access to the, uh, accounts in the computer system, uh, whi- which is only accessed via password by that one individual. Uh, another person reconciles, does the bank deposit, and so forth, another person collects. So there are different people doing different functions. No one's monopolizing the entire process, um, so I, I feel comfortable with it.
Okay, and we're confident that the bills that are supposed to be going out are actually going out at this point?
I believe they are, and what we're going to do is once, I, I will go back and review to make sure that, um, you know, anyone who hasn't been paid, I'm going to do some research and see why not. But when I was doing the billing, I did see the checks coming in for the invoices that I did send out. So I was confident that, uh, they, that they were being received by, um, the haulers. So, um, hopefully we're on the right track, and it does look like the balances are going down. So we're happy with that.
Okay, yeah, that, and, and thank you for that. I just, the, the thing that sort of popped out at me is it sounds like we sort of have this offline manual process to collect and track revenue that is owed to the town. And it just, um, you know, that's something that can, you know, with personnel changes or whatever. Hopefully there's a, now that finance is aware of it, I, you know, there should be some sort of monitoring so that you guys know that it's actually happening. Or if, you know, revenue were to decline precariously, or, I don't know how much money we're talking about here, so maybe it's not a big deal. But, um, but, uh, 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 okay. Um, Mr. Dewitt, you had a question?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Charlton, Chris Dewitt. You, you asked a lot of my questions. I, I was specifically, specifically gonna ask about segregation of duties, and, and Ms. Saxel laid that out, so that's, that's great. Um, but, uh, I am wondering how much money we're talking about here.
Okay, um, well, uh, in December, as of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, the outstanding balance over sixty days was a hu- almost a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
So not, not insignificant, and what's the total? I, I'm trying to remember, the, the total revenue from haulers is, is a fairly big number, right?
Yes, it, yes, it is.
Meeting in the millions of dollars, I think, right?
Yeah, it's, well, it's, maybe in terms of, uh, revenue from just the facility in general, could not necessarily haulers, but it is in the mil- million. So it's probably one-point-five million, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, so one-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand is not an insignificant amount of that total, so. Well, thank you for looking into that. You, you seem, you seem to have, um, have dug in. And, um, you know, I, I, I want to echo something that Ms. Charlton just said. You know, um, people leave, this is exactly the case, right? Retirement, and, um, if, if we didn't have an audit performed or some kind of a reconciliation performed, we could be sitting on, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars of lost revenue. So, so I appreciate the, uh, the efforts here, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Questions from the board on this? Okay, thank you, Ms. Saxel.
Okay, the fourth audit was WB Mason and Staples invoices audit. This audit was conducted because of the high volume of WB Mason invoices submitted by departments to finance, which were waiting in the queue for payment processing by accounts payable. The purchasing department should establish a policy whereby departments may place no more than one order per week with WB Mason and Staples for office supplies. Multiple orders per week should be prohibited. This policy should be distributed to all department heads and supervisors via email notification. Weekly departmental purchases for office supplies, which fall below fourteen dollars in total cost, should be charged on the ordering department's town-issued credit card versus submitting an invoice to accounts payable for processing. The purchasing department should send out an email to town departments encouraging them to purchase their office supplies from the town-approved vendor, who is WB Mason whenever, whenever possible, rather than using other vendors who do not pr- provide re- reduced municipal pricing. Are there any questions on that audit?
Mr. Dewitt.
Yes, correct.
Uh, no, no comment, but I want to bring up, especially for new members, you know, it was probably two years ago, we spent, uh, quite a bit of time going through the Board of Ed budget with multiple, multiple, multiple WB Mason, uh, accounts not being paid for at the end of the year. So I very much appreciate this. Um, I guess I do have one question. You know, are, do we get a volume discount from WB Mason? You know, because I would hate to hear that, oh, if, listen, if purchasing buys a hundred and fifty reams of paper a year, they get a discount, but it doesn't include the fact that DPW buys five hundred reams. So is it, is it a cumulative, um, town-wide discount or plan?
I've not, I don't believe it's a volume discount, but I do know that we do have reduced pricing, a significant reduced pricing, which is why we have, we encourage departments to use WB Mason, uh, versus going to, you know, other vendors or purchasing things on Amazon or, you know. Um, but, uh, yeah, the, the reason why this occurred was ju- as a result of my audit, when I, well, I, when I was compiling invoices to submit for reimbursement to FEMA. And there were hundreds of WB Mason invoices. And I said, this is silly, if departments did one per week, this would reduce the volume of the accounts payable clerk, she could focus on doing other things. And so that's where this audit stemmed from.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we're, we're working on the purchasing policies now, and this is, this is one that, that I was particularly interested in, in seeing. You know, I, I wonder, wonder out loud, anyway, to, to my, uh, fellow purchasing policy members now, if there's not a place in the town of Fairfield for a, um, um, we used to call it non-product, right? That the basic things that every department uses, pens, pencils, paper, stuff like that, that might be, that might be, and I don't know where that would reside, maybe within the purchasing department, but there, there may be some benefit there to have a centralized, you know, uh, ordering system for the, the generic stuff that every department uses. Might be something for our purchasing policies, so, anyway, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Yeah, I, I, um, just to follow up on Mr. Dewitt's comment. I think, um, you know, even if we're not tracking it collectively, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if WB Mason, you know, has the town of Fairfield as one customer. And, you know, to the extent that, that, you know, they know what our volume is overall, that, that has to, I, I would hope, um, work to our favor in negotiating the reduced pricing that we do have. But I, I think it's a, a really good question, and we should probably, uh, may- maybe, Mr. Schmidt, you could, you could follow up on, on that point for, uh, for Mr. Dewitt. Um, Mr. Curly?
Yep, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, it, it, one other question, kind of flipping this on its head a little bit. I, I understand the, uh, desire for efficiency in trying to minimize the number of invoices. I, I agree, if you're, if, if the town is paying hundreds of invoices when they can be paying ten in consolidating orders to, uh, be less frequent, that makes sense. But I would, I would have also thought that WB Mason would have been able to, um, have a single account for, uh, the town of Fairfield, and regardless of the number of orders placed in the calendar month of February, for example, they bill us at the end of the month for twenty-seven invoices, or whatever the number is in that given month, but we're still paying and processing one invoice or, or one payment at the end of each month. That, that's typically how a WB Mason would handle a large corporate account. I would, I'm surprised that they're not doing the same for Fairfield.
I believe the reason why we have individual invoices is because, uh, the ordering department has to sign off that they received the goods, um, that it's for the correct amount, and it has to go through a whole review and receipt process prior to being submitted for payment. And then it has to be applied to the specific account, you know, the expenditure accounts and so forth. So I think that is why, um, it's, it's broken out by departments like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Dewitt?
Yeah, you know, Mr. Curly, i- i- that's a, it, you, you, you made me think about this too. Because, you know, I'm, I was thinking about town hall. When you start adding Board of Ed into that, that's, that's where that common, that core, you know, billing function and invoicing function is gonna save. And, and, and I bet, knowing what I know about, you know, buying, not, was that, again, what we used to call non-product. And a, a company like WB Mason would love to get less invoices and love to get, you know, you know, less invoices and more billing, or, you know, less billings out, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Walsh?
I know the town finances. We bill, we have like stationary supply budgets per each department, and that's for a reason. That's for a distinct reason, that they can manage to their budget. And I don't see another way we can do it. I mean, we might have a master account, but we need to have sub-accounts. And each individual department has to manage to their budget. That is what we ask them to do. That is that what we drill down on them on, at this board level, managing to that account and making sure that they don't go over as a, as a department. So I don't, you know, I'm presuming that the finance department knows what's going on, but, you know, I don't see another way, there's gonna be some master account, that we just bill every, every department who wants a pencil's billing to the town of Fairfield or the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed's running their own budget. They have an entire finance department at the Board of Ed. And there's a reason for that. And there's state laws that require that. Many statutes on them. So, you know, I, I don't think the system's broken. I mean, Ms. Saxel's brought up some interesting things in her, in her audit, but, I mean, I don't think that we're gonna just have one account. I, I probably presume that WB Mason looks at us as one account. Sure, the state of Connecticut is, Connie, is that where we get the price, why we go with WB Mason? Is that the state number that we get?
Yes, I believe that, I believe that's the state-approved, uh, vendor.
Yeah, so it's on the state-approved thing, so we kind of have to go to that pursuant to our purchasing policies.
Right. And they give us, yeah, they give us the best pricing, that's why we, we encourage departments to use them.
Because we have the buying power in the state of Connecticut.
Simply, yeah, the audit was simply trying to reduce the volume of invoices. Uh, one department was placing an order, one to two orders a day, and we were getting in, in, two invoices a day by the same department every day.
Yeah, this makes sense.
There's no reason for it. One, 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 one order a week is sufficient, I think, in my eyes. I mean, I know emergencies happen, you have to place two orders a week maybe, but.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Curly, did you have a follow-up, or?
Yeah, I, I did. I, Jim, I, I'm agree, I agree with you that, you know, it's important that, uh, each department have their own budget and, and operate to that budget. Uh, and, and I, I think we're all on the same page that we're looking for efficiencies here. And I, I think what Ms. Saxel suggested is a good one. Um, I was just simply pointing out that if a, uh, vendor like WB Mason is looking at the town of Fairfield as one account, to Mr. Dewitt's point, they would almost certainly welcome an opportunity to minimize the amount of invoices that they're sending out, um, just as a process improvement. And the way to manage it in terms of individual department budgets and accountability is, is cost centers, which we already have. So there, there's no question that it could be done, but certainly as a first step, if we're minimizing the amount of invoices, that's great. But I, I would, I would suggest that a single phone call to, uh, the vendor, WB Mason, to find out if they could bill once monthly and break it out on a cost-center basis, that might lead to further efficiencies, that's all.
Could find out more about the process from the finance department, Mr. Schmidt. Because I, I, I thought that each of the departments had to confirm every package that comes in a week. The building department gets a WB Mason package, and the guy brings up, you know, an entire payload of stuff for the building department. Someone's supposed to go through that to make sure everything that's on the invoice is delivered, right?
That's typically what happens, and it, and it's, and it's a, you know, it, it's a timing issue as well, that there are cer- there are certain times when a department needs certain products. And so there, you know, the orders aren't placed, uh, in a way that's really synchronized, and so. But I understand the points. I think this is probably a, a good question also to, uh, bring Gerald Foley in on. And as we, uh, are, are going to, to talk more about the purchasing policy and, uh, as the, the, uh, chairwoman knows, you know, we're in the process of setting up a meeting now to have more discussions about that, um, for developing the, and finalizing the purchasing policy. But this would be, uh, you know, something that. but this would be, uh, you know, something that could be discussed there.
Okay, uh, thank you, everyone. I think those are some good points and Jared, yeah, it is an interesting, um, would be interesting to follow up on, not just for this vendor. I, I think Mr. Walsh made some important points. Um, I do, I do believe though, similar to a corp, corporation where you have multiple departments ordering and, you know, you could have an invoice that, and, and a method to, um, you know, allocate, allocate invoices. It, it just, the, the multiple invoices, I, I, I get what Ms. Saxel is saying. It's a very costly thing to, to, you know, deal with a lot of invoices. It churns up a lot of time and so seems like there, there might be a better way, but, um, you know, we, we don't know enough right now, but I, I, I think it's probably worth looking into. Um, you know, the same token, we, we, that's why we use credit cards in this town, right? Because we went to credit cards because it, we had an overwhelming volume of, you know, invoices and it just, particularly for small items or things that, you know, have, you know, people can purchase independently without a lot of approvals. It just doesn't make sense to incur the back office cost to deal with all that stuff. So, um, it's a, you know, Connie, thank you for, for raising it. I think, you know, these are, these are good, um, you know, good suggestions and in the spirit of, um, you know, modernizing and, and improving our practices, which is something I know everyone's interested in, um, you know, these are, are good things to follow up on, so thank you. Um, any other questions on this particular audit? Okay, Connie, go ahead.
Okay. Number five, uh, employees receiving commuting fringe benefits. This audit surrounded a review of all town employees who are assigned the privilege of twenty-four hour take-home use of town vehicles and confirmed that they are properly paying the fringe benefit as required under IRS guidelines. One employee was identified as not properly having the fringe benefit applied to his pay. This was reported to payroll and it was subsequently corrected. And so that was just a short, quick, quick audit and, uh, did identify one employee and that was corrected. Any questions?
Mr. Walsh?
Connie, can you just give us a sense of how many employees take home cars for twenty-four hour use? What's the number?
There are, right now, there's, uh, nine employees. There are, uh, there's a total of a hundred and seventy-one vehicles that are used, uh, both police and fire in town. Fifty-four belong to the town, a hundred and seventeen are police and fire and nine town employees, uh, have twenty-four hour use of those vehicles.
Does the, when you say nine, are you including police and fire when we're saying?
No, no, just only town.
Be police and fire.
Police and fire, right, police and fire excluded from, uh, fringe benefits, uh, because they're emergency vehicles.
Do you have a sense of what those numbers are, even though it's not part of a fringe benefit package?
Oh, um, I could get you that. I probably have that data because I did a whole review of town vehicles and who, who takes them and who uses them, who brings them home and so forth.
Right, you could just email personally, just.
Yeah, okay.
Carlton or the whole, the whole board, you know, and this way we can take it up during the whole process.
Sure. But, uh, in, in terms of the town side, nine, nine town employees.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Number six, town cemetery. This audit was conducted for the purpose of providing management with a general background as to, to the location, jurisdiction, purview of town management, sources of funding for cemetery repairs and maintenance, types of past repairs made and future repairs made at the town cemetery, or future repairs necessary in town cemeteries. The Director of Parks and Recreation, in cooperation with the Director of the Fairfield Museum and History Center, should prepare an updated annual condition assessment report that identifies in detail all necessary repairs and maintenance at each cemetery. The report should prioritize and rank all required repairs and maintenance in terms of importance and need. The Director of Parks and Recreation, in cooperation with the Director of Fairfield Museum and History Center, should prepare an annual maintenance or repair schedule for each cemetery. The timing of repairs and maintenance listed in the schedule should be based upon the prioritized rankings documented in the annual condition assessment report. The schedule should be followed each year in an effort to provide an ongoing preservation and protection of these historic town sites. Further, town annual budget should incorporate funding for estimated cost of repairs and maintenance so money is made available to pay for these expenses each fiscal year. The Fairfield Tax Assessor should correct its field card to properly reflect the correct owner of East Cemetery, which is the Fairfield Cemetery Association, not the town of Fairfield. Future repairs of headstones, tombstones at East Cemetery should be construed, only after the review and approval of the first select woman, since it does not fall under the jurisdiction of the Parks and Recreation Commission and is not a town-owned cemetery. Vandalized headstones discovered should be reported to the police department with copies of reports sent to the risk management department. Invoices pertaining to cost of repairs resulting from vandalism should be submitted to and paid from the town risk management fund. Grant funding should be sought to help defray the cost of repairs and maintenance of the town historic cemetery. Other sources of funding should also be sought through private donations and fundraisers. Are there any questions on town cemetery?
I was waiting for this report, Ms. Saxel. I didn't know whether you were going to tell us about you were checking for inventory at the cemeteries? And that everyone was where they were supposed to be or what it was about, but thank you for that report.
You're welcome.
I was going to say, I was the only one that had absolutely no idea what, what this topic could possibly be about and what, um, you know, the town's sort of responsibility was for cemeteries, et cetera. I, I had no idea about any of this, so.
Well, this, this was requested by someone on the board of Selectmen who was interested in the town cemeteries. How many did we have, uh, who, whose purview did they fall under? How did we go about, uh, conducting repairs and maintenance and so forth? And it turned out to be quite interesting because when I went to interview Town Public Works Department, I went to various departments and everybody kept telling me, we own four cemeteries. And they said, we own four cemeteries, but we were told to never, ever do any repairs and maintenance at the East Cemetery. I said, that's so odd. So I went into, to the town clerk's office and I went through the records and in nineteen twenty-one, the East Cemetery, uh, was quit claimed from the town of Fairfield to the East Cemetery Association. So it was, no longer fell under the town's purview. So that's why, uh, but it kind of got lost in the radar and so for some reasons, for many, many years, the town still considered it their cemetery, but it's not one of our cemeteries. Sorry to, to let, uh, you know that information. However, uh, we did do some repairs and maintenance on some headstones at the, at the SAT cemetery. Um, so that, it proved to be very interesting. And actually, the three cemeteries fall under the purview of the Parks and Recreation Commission and no, uh, repair or maintenance can be performed until their review and approval of that. So, uh, so it turned out to be quite an interesting, uh, little audit. Oh, and by the way, so I gave it to Mike Jaylee, uh, the Director of the Fairfield Museum and History Center and, uh, the audit, if, if you happen to see it, it's a hundred and forty-five pages long and, uh, he was, he felt it was very comprehensive. He's adding it to the, uh, museum archives, uh, for future generations who wish to review it. Hey, my audit went down in history.
Better be history than infamous.
There you go.
So I knew I'd become infamous sooner or later.
Learn something.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any questions on that, uh, audit?
All right, looks like no.
And the last, last but not least, Recreation Department Food Truck Program. And this audit was conducted to review the town food truck program offered by the Parks and Recreation Department at the beaches. Uh, and the recommendation was that the Recre, Recreation Department should update the hold harmless agreement document to reflect the correct levels of insurance coverage as shown and posted on the town website under food truck and also as shown on their rec-truck permit. Specifically, it should include the two million aggregate insurance required, requirement on the certificate and, have insurance document. Per risk management, the insurance liability requirements for the food truck program should be amended. Uh, the certificate of insurance for food trucks should include automobile liability at a minimum of five hundred thousand and workers' compensation and employee liability at the statutory required minimum. The Recreation Department should send a copy of food truck contracts to the Finance Department to ensure that all revenue and accounts receivable are properly accounted for and recorded in Munis. The Recreation Department should record this revenue in an account other than field appearance and apply it to a more appropriately named account such as Parks Department Concessions or other newly created general ledger account entitled Food Truck Permit Fees. The Recreation Department should create a, and use a formal contract that outlines the rules, requirements and expectations between the two parties and they should forward all copies of the certificates of insurance to risk management for their review and to maintain on file. Any questions on the food truck?
Mr. Walsh?
Saxel, um, I, I just want to thank you for, you know, keep following up on this insurance requirement. It's one of the things that, um, when vendors and people you're under contract with are starting to have problems, one of the first things they do is reduce their insurance coverage, try to save money. And then really what that is, is passing the risk on to the town of Fairfield. The risk levels are there for a reason, need to be there for a reason. And it's good to know that on all your audits, you're following up on them. So I, I appreciate that as, as a lawyer. Um, I'm kind of in charge of that a little bit at my own company, so it's, this is the funnest job to do, but it's something you got to get in the habit of doing, so, so thank you for that.
Very, very important, definitely. Any other questions on the audit?
I don't think so. Is that, uh, is that it for the, um, I see you have some, some draft reports here. Is that it for the audits that are completed?
Correct, that is it for the finalized audits and the draft audits are still in the review process and we're still working on, um, fine-tuning those and hope to have those, uh, in final form. Hopefully, time permitting, within the next few months. I know it's a busy time for Jared with budget process. So that, that's on the, uh, agenda for my internal audits for the next few months.
Okay. Anything else on this, um, on this particular agenda item before we get to DPW? Connie?
Uh, Mr. Walsh has a question.
I'm sorry, Jim, please.
Um, and this question, um, Madam Chairwoman, is really for Mr. Schmidt and Saxel. I guess, you know, Connie, a lot of, some of your entries on regards to the financial accounting and other area have gone to the fill pile litigation and sure our attorneys need all sorts of invoices and, and, and things done. Do both of you think that, one, with your limited staff, um, that that's a good use of Ms. Saxel's time? Or whether it'd be cheaper to get like a paralegal in from one of the law firms or somebody to come in? And, and maybe there's a privacy issue and for both of you, maybe there's a privacy issue. You don't want people going through your stuff and maybe they don't have the right to see some things or whatever. But, you know, it just seems, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of things going on. Keep reading about big things are going to happen. Yet to see it, your big things are going to happen. Um, it just seems like, I, I, I just don't know whether you feel like most of that works behind you now. I know you have to be, I, I know it's your responsibility to put it all together when asked for it by the town attorney or the attorneys that are working the case, but, you know, I guess, have you thought about bringing in outside help for that or not? And is it more economical to do that?
Mr. Walsh, what, what, um, can you just give me, be a little more specific about the types of work that you're referring to?
Let me, let me, look, I was reading Connie's two reports, so let me just go through and I'll pick one. And, uh, Connie, help me if you can find it.
And are, are you talking about the review of past, uh,
Oh.
procurement documents related to the fill pile, is that what you're?
Yes, yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
I, I just don't know whether that was a big job, whether that's not a big thing. I mean, I saw it listed on your, on your list of things that you do and I'm just not sure whether that's distracting, you know, or whether it's, you know, sometimes the, when I used to do a lot of heavy litigation, it was easier to bring in people who were at a lower billing rate than an associate who might report to me, who was billing out at three hundred dollars an hour. It was easier to find somebody, to teach them where to look for the information and put them in charge of looking for that as part of their job. I, I just don't know whether maybe it doesn't raise to that level yet or maybe you feel it's all done for what you need to do.
Uh, uh, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think it's to that level, um, although it's, it's more than I would like to do. Uh, it, and, uh, but I, I do think that a lot of it is done and it has involved, uh, myself, Connie and others on staff. Uh, you know, just in terms of locating records. We are definitely sensitive to the, you know, the, the confidentiality and the, you know, and those issues and, uh, giving outside, uh, outside people access to files that, you know, sometimes we, we don't even, we're not even certain, uh, what they're mixed in with or what, you know, what other, uh, kinds of information might be, uh, might be in those, those folders or those file cabinets, uh, you know, that, that does get a little bit dicey. And so, you know, we have, we have handled it internally, um, to date. Uh, and I, you know, I think for the most part, the, the fill, this, this particular issue, the fill pile, we've located what's out there, I mean, what's, what's in, what's in the town. So, you know, there may be some other, uh, tasks that need to be done with, uh, copying, uh, scanning, those kinds of things, but for the, I, I would say that, um, you know, ba, based on the work that we've done in reconciling the records that we have within Munis and the record, the, the hard copies of, of records that we've, uh, you know, I'm fairly certain that we found pretty much everything at this point.
I think Mr. Walsh has a great idea though, because, I mean, a paralegal is cheaper than you and a paralegal worth his or her salt agrees to be bound, bound by confidentiality at risk of their career. So if that's something, you know, that the administration needs to come to us for future approval on, I think you would receive a warm welcome on that.
Yeah, and we'll definitely, we'll keep it in mind, uh, as we move forward. Uh, and then the other thing is that when we start these projects, we don't know. We, we just don't know how much work they're going to be, uh, you know, until we're halfway into it or, uh, you know, and we realize, wow, this is, uh, you know, a lot more work and things weren't as, uh, as easy to locate as we thought.
Uh, thank you. Um, does anybody else have any comments on that point? I think that, you know, I think a lot of the questions are, um, about, you know, Ms. Saxel, about kind of what you're spending your time on or, or sort of getting to the same question, which is, um, you know, again, and this is not to be critical of anybody. It's, it's a recognition that what you're doing here provides value. You know, you've done audits that have saved the town money, that have addressed risk issues, that have, you know, covered a, a wide variety of things and, you know, there's substance to what you're doing here. And, um, I think that. And, um, I think that it's, it's, um, I appreciate what Mr. Schmidt said. Sometimes you don't know and these one-time things are gonna come up, but, you know, what I would say is, is to the extent, Ms. Saxel, you're spending time on more routine tasks consistently as part of your job, whether it be bank reconciliations or, you know, things of that nature, those I would, you know, sort of refer to what Mr. Walsh said. Those are areas, in my opinion, where we could really get, you know, more value from your time by looking to see, you know, i- if those are, are really things that you ought to be doing, someone at, at, at your level. Um, because it's, it seems to me that there's a lot more value to be added, um, in other ways. I, I know that's easy to say, uh, again, I'm not trying to be critical of, of anybody, but these are, are good questions to think about, particularly as we come to, um, you know, as, as we're moving into the budget season, and I agree with Mr. Stark. I think, you know, at least from, from my perspective, and it sounds like from the board, there's, you know, there's support for doing this as there was for, you know, putting in a part-time grant coordinator. There was a recognition that by investing some money and resources to do some of these things, we, we'd ultimately be, um, helping the town financially, so, um. So, thank you, um, everybody for your comments. Jim, did you have a follow-up point? I'm sorry, I should be calling you Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, do you have a follow-up point? I, I think you're muted, Mr. Walsh.
Sorry about that, my mouse wasn't working.
Oh, there you go.
So, um, I wholeheartedly agree, um, Ms. Charlton with everything you just said. I always find it very refreshing when Ms. Saxel comes before us and tells us about the audits that she's working on, because there's never been one time, not once, that she's been before us, where she said she went to go audit a department and there wasn't numerous things she found. And, um, you know, having gone through some of the alleg- alleged things we've all seen over the last two, couple of years with the fill pile and other things like that, um, you're led to believe that, you know, maybe if we do a little more digging, we could stop some things and get some more controls in place or ask employees to follow the controls that are properly in place that are not being followed. So, yeah, I think, I mean, I, I think, I would think that another employee within the Finance Department who could do some of these more routine things and take on special projects that they would definitely be used in a, um, lesser salary level than Ms. Saxel, and she can get on to her more expertise stuff for her 30 years' worth of, um, professional expertise and, and get some more things done. So I think it should be something to explore, and Mr. Schmidt, I would wholeheartedly approve that if you would, making your budget, might consider that when working with the First Selectwoman on what the priorities are for the town. Thank you.
You heard it here, Jared.
Loud and clear, loud and clear, believe me.
Uh, does anyone else have any comments, um, on this before we move on to the next agenda item? Ms. Saxel, are you, you done with the internal audit report?
Yes, I'm, I think, uh, I'm all set with that. And, and if anyone ever has any questions, please feel free to email me or call me at Finance Department. Uh, I'm more than happy to, to talk further on any of the audits or share any information with you.
Okay, terrific. Um, before we, um, move on to item four, which Connie's also gonna take us through, the status of the DPW audit report findings, um, I, I want to acknowledge that it's been, um, 20 months since the DP, DPW, um, audit report was originally delivered to this board. And, uh, obviously, 20 months is a long time, we've, we've done a lot of stuff in that time period. So for the benefit of our new members, for the benefit of the public, and, and just all of us really, um, I want to give a refresher, I'm, I'm gonna take a couple minutes and give a refresher on this item before Ms. Saxel, um, gets into the status, i- i- if that's okay, just to set the table. So, as I, as I alluded to at the start of the meeting, the DPW audit was commissioned by this board back in the fall of 2019, and the process was led by former chairman Tom Flynn, now Selectman Flynn. And the town's independent auditor, PKF O'Connor Davies, was engaged by this board to look at transactions in DPW over roughly a three-year period from July, uh, July 1, 2016 to July 31st, 2019, to determine if the town's policies and procedures were appropriate and if those policies and procedures and internal controls were actually being followed as intended. And the auditors did that work broadly, um, by carrying out a, a couple of, of procedures. They, they read and evaluated any written policies that the town had in place. They interviewed management, department heads, finance personnel, purchasing personnel, and, and other appropriate individuals. And they did, uh, transactional testing. The auditors sampled roughly 350 DPW purchases over the three-year audit period, and they looked for evidence that invoices were supported, that amounts paid were justified and appropriate, that proper bidding and quoting procedures were carried out in accordance with the town policies. And the results of the audit, um, were laid out in that May 2020 report, which begins on page seven of the meeting backup. That report identified a significant number of deficiencies in the town's policies and practices, but on top of that, there was a fairly high degree of non-compliance with the policies in place. So in other words, even though our policies were weak in some respect, the policies that we did have were not being complied with consistently. And the appendices in the report lay out these findings. Um, so for example, the, the report, um, what was reported is that bidding requirements were not consistently followed. There was a lack of documentation to support whether the town complied with requirements to get multiple quotes when we made purchases. There were instances of sole source contracts being awarded without any apparent rationale. There were invoices paid with no purchase orders, um, which, or other supporting documentation, which, which gave rise to questions about whether our purchasing department was involved appropriately and, and how the payments got authorized through our finance department. There was evidence of, of bid splitting. So for example, if our policy required, you know, purchases over $3,000 to be supported by multiple quotes, that would get circumvented by someone making multiple purchases from the same vendor for $2,900 each. And, you know, the findings were obviously troubling, but, you know, perhaps not entirely surprising because they were consistent in a number of respects with matters that were alleged in the police affidavits and the criminal complaints related to the fill pile. So that final audit report that we got, um, back in May of 2020 had 76 recommendations, a number of the more significant recommendations related to deficiencies in our purchasing policy. A wholesale rewrite of the purchasing policy was carved out as a project in itself. Um, the Select Committee for the Purchasing Policy, led by Mr. DeWitt, was created, and our board approved funding to engage our outside auditors again to review the revised policy drafted by the town, and subsequently to assist in, um, revising the town's draft so that the updated policy would, among other things, address the findings from the audit. In addition to the purchasing policy issues, there were a number of other recommendations made as a result of the findings. Um, and the town's been working on adopting those recommendations, and Ms. Saxel has been, um, leading that effort recently in tracking the status of the remediation, and she'll be, she'll be taking us through that status. So I just wanted to, um, put that refresher out there, um, before Ms. Saxel walks us through the status of the findings, because sometimes when we, you know, when we talk about these audit recommendations, it's, it's, it's important to remember, um, where they came from. And, you know, in, in this case, they came from, uh, a detailed look at, uh, transactions that, you know, made it apparent that, you know, we had, uh, a lot of non-compliance with, with what was supposed to be happening during that time period. So, um, Ms. Saxel, you have provided us a document in the backup that walks through some statistics on, on where we stand in, you know, on remediation of, or, or adoption of the, the recommendations in that audit report. Um, and I, I think that starts on page five of the PDF. Do you wanna, do you wanna walk us through that? Actually, before, before you do that, does anybody have any questions on anything I said? Um, Mr. Tesani?
Yes, hi, Madam Chairman, thank you. I just curious, had John Marsilio or anyone from DPW been informed that this would be discussed tonight? And is there a reason why there isn't anyone from DPW, in addition to Ms. Saxel, to review the report with us?
Um, good question, Mr., so I do know that, um, and Jared, you can jump in here. You know, Mr. Marsilio was, um, you know, received this audit when he first joined the town, and I know that, you know, he, uh, I believe Ms. Ms. Kupchik told us that he found it very helpful in terms of kind of getting the lay of the land, and I, I think he's been, he and his people have been working with Ms. Saxel, but she has been working to just do the tracking of this. So I'm not sure I have a good answer for you. Jared, do you have, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll comment. Um, I know that, uh, Mr. Marsilio is not able to make it, and he was out all this week and has been out, um, for a little bit now. Uh, so he, he was, would not be able to make it, uh, which, you know, that was one of the reasons that we needed to, uh, also delay the capital that we talked about, uh, moving the capital plan later too, because he couldn't be here this week for that. Uh, so, you know, Connie and I are, are here to address some of the, uh, things that may not be related to DPW and to give an audit, given, give a report on, uh, the progress of certain things that we know have happened. Uh, and if you are looking to get deeper into the operation of DPW, you know, we're happy to accommodate something in the future where Mr. Marsilio can attend, uh, and if needed, the First Selectwoman can attend as well. Um, but for these purposes, you know, I, I view this as we've done in the past and as Connie has done in the past, to give a, a, uh, an update on the progress of things that are, are maybe in progress, uh, and haven't been, maybe haven't been completed, but, uh, we're still working toward completion. And then, uh, th- there's also a number of things that are related to the purchasing policy that, uh, will be completed once that is done. But, uh, yeah, so, so in short answer, Mr. Marsilio is not able to be here this week.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions before Connie walks us through the status report? Okay, Ms. Saxel.
Okay. Update on the DPW independent audit findings and recommendations from the report dated May 19, 2020. So I've been meeting and working with the applicable department heads on a regular basis in order to follow up on the audit findings and recommendations addressed in the DPW independent audit report. And fol- the follow-up meetings with the department heads have been positive, and they have all been open and responsive to complying with the audit recommendations. Um, I do meet regularly with, uh, Mr. Marsilio and the Assistant Director of Public Works, John Cattell, and they've all been open and positive and have been very helpful in working with me and remedying and closing out some of the audit, um, findings and recommendations. Uh, status as of today, there are 76 findings and recommendations in the report. Forty-four are deemed fully implemented, six were deemed not applicable, and 26 are partially complete or are in progress at this time. Of these 26 items in progress, 17 directly relate to the new updated purchasing policy, and these will be addressed upon its implementation. This leaves the balance of nine items that remain open or in process. Audit findings and recommendations are followed up and tracked by internal audit on a matrix spreadsheet. The matrix details the status of the audit recommendation, the date it was implemented, the due date of implementation if known, follow-up dates, notes, along with comments and responses from both the department heads and internal audit. Regular updates regarding the status of the audit report recommendations have been made to the audit subcommittee since May of 2020, when the report was initially issued. And I've also shared the matrix with, um, Mr. Marsilio as well, so he can see what the, what the responses are, what the status of the recommendations are and so forth. And I do go down to his department and I ask him how things are going, how, what, you know, how is the progress? Is progress being made on certain open recommendations? And, um, he's been more than, than helpful. So the most recently closed items are the new road maintenance software package. The town purchasing department went out to RFP for a new road maintenance software package for DPW. The RFP was awarded to a company called The Beta Group. A presentation was given, uh, during a special joint meeting of the RTM Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen on December 7, 2021. The road portion is complete, and DPW is still waiting for surveys pertaining to the sidewalk maintenance portion. And the department is working currently through the budget process to determine the funding level needed to finalize the road program. Munis training, two additional Munis training sessions relating to accounts payable and payroll were provided to all town employees in November and December. Future Munis financial training sessions are scheduled for employees during calendar 2022. The status of the remaining open items. The Director of DPW is currently reviewing applications for the new financial analyst position. No offer has been made to date to fill the position. IT and DPW reviewed a work order system called Asset Management Plus as a possible replacement for the Q Alert system that is currently being used. The maintenance cost of this system is $40,000 per year. DPW is currently still using the existing Q Alert system, which is meeting the department's everyday needs, but is still reviewing the possibility of utilizing a new and improved work order system. The online permitting system. The building department has been running internally on a new online permitting, permitting system since mid-November. They are no longer using the old permitting system and are now using a new software called Municity. Building online applications with electronic payments are anticipated to commence within the next few weeks. The town planning and zoning and conservation departments' implementation of the online permitting system are currently underway. The health department, fire marshal, engineering, and sewer departments will soon follow thereafter. Human Resources is reviewing various electronic timekeeping systems. A selection has not been made for a time, an attendance module to date. Do you have any questions on the, uh, DPW independent audit?
Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, um, to, uh, Ms. Chairman, uh, and, uh, Connie, thank you for that overview. Um, I just want to be, I want to make sure I'm clear. When we say fully implemented, um, a, a remedy is in place and it's documented, is that not correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Right, so the reason that we have the orange, all the orange will, in theory, when we release this purchasing policy, everything will go over to fully implemented and, and, and will be good?
Yes, and of course, we would have to train the employees on the, on the new policy and make sure that
Right.
the bulleted points in the policy are, are adhered to by the department and that they're familiar with those new policies and procedures, yeah.
Great, okay. I just wanted to be sure, uh, for, that everyone understood, uh, because there were some comments made, um, earlier this week about, about the audit and, and the, you know, the, the matrix and all. But fully implemented means that we are documented, which is, it, which is, you know, very important and something that, you know, Ms. Charlton and I have been, you know, really pushing hard on the purchasing policy, right? So that, yeah, and I think for those who haven't seen this before, there's a lot of orange in here, right? And that purchasing policy is a big deal, I mean, for se- you know, it's 17 out of 76, but I gotta tell you, I think those are some of the most important 17 on the list, and there's a lot of ones in there with priority, so, so, so. important 17 on the list, and there's a lot of ones in there with priority. So, so, so thank you, thank you for the update and that clarity.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I would if I could.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
So, the policy is framed out, but it's not implemented yet? Or is it partially implemented? Or?
The purchasing policy?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I think it's still in draft form. It is being reviewed, and it has not been finalized. So once it becomes finalized, then our plan is to forward it to the department, educate the department, give training, and hopefully at that point, then these open items will be considered fully implemented.
Okay. I guess expenditures originate in a lot of different ways. So let's just take an example, if we could, like one that comes in through the, I'm forgetting the name of the system, the Q system, where the
The Q Alert.
says, I want this particular thing fixed. And don't, don't kill us with detail on this, just, just an overview. Like, what, what do you think would be different at a high level in the way that requests comes in, in the new system versus the old?
Well, I believe the old system, it does function and it produces what the department needs. And I believe the new systems are more automated, it prioritizes the, the need to go out for a repair and a maintenance based on a Q Alert, and it, it prioritizes it based on immediate need, is from my understanding, which the old system I don't believe does. Right now, the Q Alerts do produce documented repairs, maintenance, or other items that are reported, they're submitted to the individual supervisors, and they make the repairs based on how they see fit. But I think this would document it in a more organized fashion for the department heads. That is my understanding.
So, there's a value judgment in there somewhere, but it's probably at a higher level on the new system? Like, somebody closer to director level says, wait, why are you prioritizing that? Or, I'm, I'm spitballing because I don't really know.
Yeah, I think that was the concern with the independent auditor, was that the, the current system doesn't do that.
Okay.
As I understand.
So, lower-level people could prioritize things as they see fit?
Right.
Okay, that's great.
Mr. DeWitt?
Mr. Stark, you made me think of something. I want to give credit where credit is due. And Connie, please tell me if I'm, I'm off track here. As far as the purchasing policy is concerned, there have been some interim changes made that will, much, much to my point before, will be fully documented in the purchasing policy, but some of the best practices that are, that are, again, going to be, you know, quantified in the purchasing policy are in place. And that's why they're partially implemented, right? Is that not true, Connie?
Yes, that is true. That would involve, we call it the pink voucher system. We have a whole policy and procedure now for that. We're doing the training to educate the departments on how to make their purchases and make, ensure that they're following the proper channel and so forth. And our accounts payable people are now also instructed to make sure that there's receiving reports and so forth, to make sure that, you know, to remedy some of these recommendations that were made in the internal, I mean, in, in the independent audit report.
Right. Yeah, so, right. So, some good work's already been done, but again, as Ms. Charlton and I have been preaching for the last, I don't know how many months, I mean, until the final papers released, you know, it's, it's, it's still good work, but until it's really released, it's not, it's not a policy, right?
Right.
So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Ms. Marmian?
Hi, just to get to this a little bit more, so what's the timing for, for finalizing this? Where are we with it? What's, is there, people are still reviewing it? It's, when can we expect it to be finalized?
I'll, I'll let the Chair of the Purchasing Committee address that. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank, well, thank you. Our next step is, we're, we're gonna, First Select Woman is gonna hold a meeting. Ms. Charlton, I, I get Mr. Stark now is, is on our committee. Mr. Foley, Mr. Bremer, a couple others, we're all going to get together. But the, the, the bottom line is, you know, Mr. Santafanti has delivered a document that I believe, and I think Ms. Charlton, if I may speak for her for a few seconds, I think Ms. Charlton believes, is much, 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 much better than we, we had before, and very close to a final solution. Now, we still need to, that's been delivered, we still need to vet that through the town and vet that through the Board of Ed side. Listen, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, I'd like to see this done certainly before we start the budget process. And, and, and I mean done as in reviewed by the town, reviewed by the Board of Ed, comments made, Mr. Santafanti doing his work, and all nine of us looking at this and, and raising our hand. Would you agree with that, Ms. Charlton?
That, that would be ideal, yes. Yeah, so just, and just
Good way to put it without committing.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's not really in, in my control, but if I may
Yeah, nor mine, right?
That's what you said. So, to Ms. Marmian, and just to kind of help everybody understand, so the, the town originally drafted a policy, and we, they, they went through the process, they looked at other towns, they sort of amalgamated, you know, what other towns were doing, they put together a document. What Mr. Santafanti assisted us with, and if you recall, it was several months ago, this board approved some additional funding for, to, to hire him to help go back and, you know, I don't, I don't know what the right word is, but, but make that policy more concise, more logical, to help it follow the actual purchasing process, to make sure it was comprehensive in terms of addressing all the deficiencies in the audit report, and also to make sure that we had a roadmap for users. Because this, this purchasing policy is, it's not for the use of the purchasing department as much as it's for the use of people who use things, you know, whether it's department heads, administrative assistants, you know, all the people in town that, that are responsible for, you know, ultimately following it. So the policy was put together, and Mr. Santafanti even added, you know, he collected, he created an appendix with all the various forms and documents that, that are used through the process that people have to sign off on and use for authorization for bids, et cetera. So everything's sort of in one place. So it's in pretty good shape, I think. It's, it has some open items that the town has to respond to. And, you know, there were some changes made that were not just reorganization of what the town did, but there were additions. You know, Mr. Santafanti added some sections to address things that weren't in the first policy. So the town is, has got to look at that, and, you know, ultimately, you know, has to provide comment on it, because this has to be operational, you know, it's, it's, it's got to be something that everyone can use, use as an easy reference manual, and that will be, you know, pragmatic while at the same time addressing, you know, the risks that we have and addressing the deficiencies that were identified in the last audit. So there's been a lot of eyes on it. We are trying to get a meeting scheduled, as Mr. DeWitt said, with all the right parties, to talk about what the town's questions and comments are, so we can get those on the table, resolve them, and move this thing forward ultimately to make a recommendation to this board. And, you know, and get it to a place where, where we can move on and shut down these items. Yes, Sheila?
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I, I just, I want to stress that this is, in my mind, there's got to be a real sense of urgency. I, I hear we are coming. You have to get some responses from the administration. But honestly, my concern is that our town was at risk through the DPW stuff that went down, and in my mind, we're still at risk if we do not have a purchasing policy that is rock solid and is going to prevent some of these issues from happening again. So, right now, I feel like we're in, we're in limbo to some extent. And I, I mean, I'm, I'm somewhat concerned. I, I don't know, I, do we know of any instances where the town has not followed our existing purchasing policy besides the, the fill pile issue? Because there's, it's like, there's a vacuum going on.
Well, I, I just, I see Mr. DeWitt's got his hand up, but I just want to clarify, the, the instances where, in this audit report that were outlined, where policies were, were not followed, did not have to do with the fill pile. They had to do with everyday
Right.
activities that were going on in the department. It purchases of, of all, all manner. Okay? So this was more of a, you know, I don't, I'm not sure if cultural is the right word, but there was, you know, there were practices in place where, you know, things were done routinely. In fact, I think Mr. Santafanti told us that, you know, employees he interviewed told him very openly that, you know, if, if you needed a quote for something at $3,000, easy. You just, you know, make two purchases for $2,900. I get, didn't even register that that was a bad thing. So, you know, these are, these were not, you know, they were some of the same issues that, you know, when you looked at the fill pile situation, you know, how did we manage to, you know, hire a vendor without a, a proper bid? How did we manage to pay that vendor? You know, all the things that went wrong were similar to the findings that were in this audit, but the findings in this audit related to just everyday transactions that we're running through. So, your, your point is well taken. I think there's, you know, I, I, I agree with you. I think there should be urgency, and I'm going to let Mr. DeWitt add on to that.
I, I, I would also agree that there's, there should be some urgency to it. This is specifically why I brought up that point after, after Mr. Stark brought, you know, spoke about the purchasing policy, and, and Ms. Connie confirmed. You know, of these orange highlighted things here, there have been, you know, incremental fixes, if you will, been put into place. And I do agree that they're not 100%, you know, there's not a bow put around them until the purchasing policy is in place. So I want to make sure everyone understands that there has been forward progress, and the, the, the release of the purchasing policy really is that, is that bow around the whole thing. So, you know, I, 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 I agree with the urgency, and I, I couldn't agree more. And I was also going to say what Ms. Charlton said, you know, a lot of these things may have reared their, their ugly heads during the fill pile incident, but they, they're not on this audit because of the fill pile, you know? So, so, you know, this is addressing core issues that, you know, may have helped, certainly would have helped in, in the fill pile situation. But, but you know what? The one thing I really want to address is this. So last night, there was a lot of talk about Gould Manor at the RTM meeting and about, oh, did we get three bids for stuff like this? These kind of things are addressed in this purchasing policy, right? When you go out and, you know, normally we want to get three bids, there's, there's time, there's times where we don't have that luxury. Mr. Mancusi on the Board of Ed side made it very clear, Ms. Charlton and I, that there's times for special education teachers that, you know what, or services, that we just can't wait, and there's only one, one person you can go to anyway, right? So this purchasing policy will address a lot of those three bids, and it'll also address preferred suppliers and, you know, single source bids, you know, those kind of things. So, again, a, a lot of talk about that last night. Purchasing policy getting released is gonna, is gonna clear up a lot of that stuff that came up last night especially.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Mr. Curly, you have a question?
Yeah, just to follow up on that. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. That, that was actually helpful because I did pay attention to the meeting last night, the RTM meeting last night. And, and I did have some questions. Ms. Marmian mentioned that we, we seem to be in a little bit of limbo, and, and I do, I do have questions about whether the bidding process was followed for the bathrooms, for example, and whether the scoreboards that were ordered were ordered in, in advance of the funding being approved. And so I guess my question is probably twofold. One, to you, Mr. DeWitt, as a, as the Chair of the purchasing, or policy Subcommittee, and to Mr. Schmidt, representing the town. Mr. DeWitt, what is your understanding of it? Could you give us a preview of what we might expect to see in the new policy as it relates to the, the minimum of three bids and things like that? And I guess my question to Mr. Schmidt is, were, were policies followed, the existing policies followed for the, for the Gould Manor activity, whether it's for the scoreboards or the bathrooms last night?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can start with the expectation. I can't speak specifically to Gould Manor because I don't, I don't have that information. I, I heard what you heard last night, and I didn't call anyone today to, you know, to dig into it. But, you know, good purchasing policy practice would say that you would, you would get, if, if you have the time, right? You would go out and get three bids, right? There also needs to be a robust process, which, which is, is in here, that says there are times where you can go to a sole source, right? And there's some very specific guidance around that, you know? Just because, just because, you know, I, I go to Mr. Curly's tree farm because he's the only person that sells, you know, cherry trees in the area, doesn't mean Mr. Curly can charge me a million dollars a tree, right? So there's, you know, you go out to the industry and you say, okay, he's charging a hundred bucks a tree, maybe the industry standard's 90 bucks. You know, there's reasons to do sole source kind of activities. But in general terms, any good purchasing policy, you'd have multiple bids, and unless you're a very specific entity, like Mr. Mancusi talked about with special ed and things like that, and, or you don't violate single source, that, that's the way the policy is written right now, that's in
So I guess I, I guess I'd want to clarify the question, though. I, I assume that you've seen a draft at least of, of the policy, and I guess my question is, are you comfortable that the exceptions to that three bid process, for example, would be adequate to address the, the single source issue that, that you're talking about? And, and if that doesn't exist currently, that may be just the part of the problem that we have. But I guess my question back to Mr. Schmidt, Schmidt would be, you know, who, who has the authority to approve those exceptions currently? Or, or where, when we're not following policy, who, who's accountable for that?
Can I, can I just add on to what Mr. DeWitt said? I, I do want to let Mr. Schmidt speak, and Jared, sorry we keep jumping ahead of you here, because I'm not going to attempt to answer any questions about Gould Manor. I, you know, candidly don't know what went on and, and have some of the same questions other people had. But one of the things that's very important in a policy, Mr. DeWitt alluded to this, and we talked to Mr. Santafanti extensively about this. There has to be a mechanism in a policy that clearly covers, you know, waivers and exceptions. They have to be defined. And when, when that becomes necessary, there has to be a process around it. For example, we may have an emergency where a roof collapses, and, you know, you, you don't take three months to go to a bidding process. You, you have an emergency process that allows us to procure services and requires disclosures and approvals in, in a certain way. There may be sole source things, you know, Mr. DeWitt alluded to special ed services, that just don't neatly fit in a bid process because, one, they're mandated by the state, they have to be provided immediately. And, you know, there's, there's just, there's kind of a, a couple of buckets of things that, that have to be treated in, in a different way, with appropriate controls, but, but differently, so that, so that you can operate pragmatically, right? I think that the question and the concern comes in is not that, you know, there's, there's two things, right? Is that, does the policy give enough flexibility to actually be operational and make sense, so that you can operate in a way that, that reduces risk but is, is feasible? But, you know, are we, are we also complying with the policy as it stands? And, you know, if we're just not complying with the policy because we don't feel like it, or it was inconvenient, no policy is going to fix that, and that's a problem. no policy is going to fix that, and that's a problem, right? If people aren't complying with a policy because it doesn't make sense or it's not pragmatic, then you have to look at the policy and say, does, you know, why is this never being complied with? Is there something wrong with here? Are thresholds too low? Are, is it too restrictive? Is it not workable? So, the attempt that was made with this new draft was to address all of those things. And to your question, Craig, will the, you know, will it fix what the issues that were identified? We had Mr. Centefanti very specifically give us a matrix to say, for every audit finding, tell us exactly how that maps, that the policy change maps to that, and how a policy change will address that. So, there is a specific mapping of that. It is there. And, you know, and then it becomes all about training and compliance. I think, you know, I can't answer the Gould Manor questions. I think those are separate, they're legitimate. I think the RTM has some things outstanding, but I understand the concerns. I think what we've got is a good working document. I'm glad Mr. Stark is going to join the committee. It's great to have another set of eyes on this thing. And I hope that, you know, we can move forward with this in a way that, you know, takes the town's input, is workable, but also addresses, you know, all of these issues so that we can all feel comfortable that the town is protected and that, you know, and that our dollars, there's appropriate stewardship over our dollars when the town spends money. So, sorry to be winded, but I hope that's helpful.
And for the last part of your question, Mr. Curley, there's, and I'm recollecting it's a table, but it says, so, I'm making this up, right? There's a bid over $50,000, and you can't follow the three-bid process? You know, the CFO can override it. I mean, there's very specific things in there. And the CFO doesn't, is out of town, then the first select woman can do it. You know, there's those kind of things in places. That's very standard protocol, you know, because, again, you know, one of the biggest things that was problematic in the fill pile was people signed invoices to pay people. They had no right to sign them. I mean, they weren't even in the right group to sign for invoices, right? So, you know, again, this documents it very well. But, when you don't have a policy in place, and you say, hey, Craig Curley signed this. And you're like, well, another policy says Craig Curley can't sign this. So, you need a process to say who can sign it, but you also need a process to say who can't sign it, right?
Yeah, and the more ambiguous the process is, the more the policy, the more complex it is, the less user-friendly it is, the more likely it is that people aren't going to follow it. So, that was part of what our, you know, we hired Mr. Centefanti to do, was to lay this thing out in a way that would be user-friendly to people who are, you know, just everyday users. You know, it's indexed, it's in a logical sequence. You can go in, you can find the procedure, you can find the exception. If there's an exception, you can find, figure out who has to approve that and what the process is. So, I think we've got a good working document, but we just need to
And there's an example now, too, which is excellent. There's examples of what the right thing should be, so, all right, I'm done. Mr.?
Mr. Schmidt, I think, wanted to address some of your questions. So, again, Jared, apologize for monopolizing. Go ahead. Jared, you're muted.
Thank you. The conversation that happened last night with the RTM, there was a commitment to that we would follow up with backup documentation. So, we're going to do that with regard to that specific issue. I didn't think we were going to cover that tonight, for sure. We have, as Mr. Dewitt pointed out, we have made some changes along the way that have been implemented. Connie mentioned the pink vouchers as one example. But, and I know it's urgent, but it's also, we need to do it right. And I understand that you have a certain view about what Mr. Centefanti put together and that what he did, you know, that the administration should, you know, we should kind of just accept that. But, we need to look closely at it. We need to look at it compared to the document that we handed off to you and you handed to Mr. Centefanti to look at. So, we need to make those, we have to make those comparisons. And we have to do all this while we're doing, in particular, Mr. Foley, while we're doing our day-to-day job. So, you know, we're working our way through it. But the most important thing is that we get this right. And absolutely, there's going to have to be the processes, the checks and balances in place in the processes. We also need to keep in mind that those exceptions need to be in place, especially now. You know, we have a ton, a ton of projects that are, that are sitting with us now and are going to continue to mount, that we need to be able to work our way through and do it again in a way where we're, you know, conforming to the checks and balances, but doing it in a way that we're getting things done for the town, for the good of the town, for the taxpayers, because that's what they want us to do. But also, you know, doing it in a way that balances the checks and balances. But it's a lot of work, and we are working our way through it. As I, but as I said, it's got to be something that gets done right.
Thank you. I don't know whether you had a person, Ms. Marmian?
Thanks very much. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. I mean, I know it takes time. I know, we want this to be thorough, we want it to be done well. But, back to my earlier question in terms of if there are instances you're aware of in the meantime, in this limbo where the town has not followed our purchasing policy. And I am going to reference Gould Manor because I listened to the RTM meeting, and it was a lot going on. But the thing that struck me, you know, the bidding issues, I get, et cetera. I know we're working that through, we're getting backup. But I was really surprised to hear that the scoreboard for Gould Manor Park had been ordered and without approval. So, in other words, we're on the hook for it, perhaps we paid for it, and it was never approved. So, my question is, in this instance, what are the repercussions? Like, what does the finance department now do? Because that's flagged. That's, I think, out of order, correct? So, what do you do now? How do you correct something like this? We don't have a, you know, this purchasing policy in place, but this is obviously something that's out of order. So, what do you do as a finance department? What, like, you, this was signed off on, the invoice was paid. How does this happen, and what are the repercussions?
As I said, you're assuming that there were things that were done that were out of order with what the purchasing policy calls for. And we're putting together backup documentation now to show you what the processes were that were followed. So, I'm not going to, I'm not going to address what, right now, is a hypothetical question related to a very, you know, a concrete issue. So, once we have that documentation and we have the backup for you, if there are problems in there, then we'll look at it, and we'll look at addressing them.
And I appreciate that. I know you're going to look into this more, but let's say it was something else. What is the follow-up? What does the finance department do? What are the repercussions? Let's ignore Gould Manor. Like, what if this happened elsewhere? And I'm not saying it has, but I just, I need to understand the process of what you then do.
It's totally going to depend on what the, if there was a violation, what the violation was. I can't, again, you're talking in hypotheticals, and it would have to depend on what the problem was. And we would take the right, take the appropriate steps to address it. I can't address it. There's, you're not giving me a concrete example because there's not one. So, I, you know, I don't know what to tell you on that.
Mr. Curley, and Ms. Marmian, are you? Do you have a follow-up?
I guess, imagine I'm a department head, and I violate the purchasing policy, right? What, so what, what does that mean? I'm just, I'm not, I'm just curious. Like, are they given a warning? Are they, I mean, what are the repercussions to violating the purchasing policy? And I know it's, I'm not giving you a specific example, but
Sheila, you muted yourself.
Sorry. I understand you don't have any answer for me right now. I just needed to understand the, so what? So, I violate the purchasing policy. What does that mean?
So, and, you know, I think that's something that could be addressed by, in the meetings, the meetings that we'll have in the future is, do you want to have penalties in there? If there's something, you know, somebody violates the policy, you know, do you want to put penalties in there? Depending on what the violation is. Because right now, and as far as I know in the past, there hasn't been anything like that other than if there were a violation of law.
Okay, I'm going to, I want to, I want to let Mr. Curley speak. I just, if I'm hearing Ms. Marmian right, I think maybe the question, Jared, is, and going back to the audit report, which I'm going to acknowledge was before your time, was in prior administration. I get that. But we had a situation where it seemed like, somewhat routinely, stuff was getting paid, bills were getting paid out of the finance department that didn't have appropriate documentation. You know, did that just stop happening one day? What changes were made? I think that's what people are trying to get to. You know, we had this audit a couple of years ago, and all these recommendations are happening, and there's a purchasing policy in process. But, you know, not all of this is about policy, it's about compliance. And I think that was what the concerns last night were raised relating to was compliance. So, I just throw that out there again. I'm not trying to play gotcha here or anything. I'm just trying to, I think, interpret where the questions are coming from, which is, you know, the concern is, we're in some middle ground here where we're waiting to finish addressing these things. So, what's happening in the meantime? And what are we doing to make sure that, you know, this stuff is not occurring? So, I'm not asking you for an answer on that right now, but I think that's the substance of the concern in the question. So, Mr. Curley, do you want to ask something?
Yeah, thank you. I think I was thinking, I understand the direction of the questions that Ms. Marmian was asking and the clarification that you just provided, Madam Chair. I think I, my thought process is actually kind of going down a slightly different road. But I understand Mr. Dewitt's point that a good policy should allow for exceptions, and I agree. Not, we can't always follow and get three bids, for example, or whatever it might be, or time might be of the essence. So, we need, a good policy should have an exception policy built in. But the example that Mr. Dewitt gave was perhaps the CFO can provide an override, or the first select woman, or the chief administrative officer, for example, whoever it might be. My concern is that if we're not careful about how that exception policy is written, the administration could just, at a higher level, choose not to follow it because they could make everything an exception. And I actually think that it's less likely that a department head is going to violate a purchasing policy on purpose, especially if there is a potential consequence. But if they know that they've got the support of the CFO or a CAO, or whoever it might be, they don't have to follow that policy because they can just go and get an exception whenever they want. So, I guess my question is, is it prudent to have the CFO or CAO or their first select woman as the individual who provides that approval of the exception? Or is there a best practice? And I guess this might be a question for Ms. Saxel, whether, as with her experience on the internal audit side, is there a recommendation that she might have, or is she involved in this purchase, purchasing policy rewrite, looking at it from an independent point of view?
Before, Saxel, can I just throw in? I don't want, Mr. Curley, I don't want, I don't want there to be a misunderstanding, and Mr. Dewitt, I apologize if I'm speaking for you, of exactly what Mr. Dewitt said. Because I will tell you, one of the things that we were, one of the significant comments that we had about the policy is that there cannot just be, you know, some provision that says, you know, you can waive this when you feel like you need to. Like, there has to be a reason in every policy. So, for example, it's an emergency. It's a health and safety issue that has to be addressed, you know, immediately. Then, you know, the appropriate person, CFO, first select woman, whoever, can in fact approve that. But it's based on a set of criteria. So, the policy, I'm not going to say it's perfect, but what the policy has laid out was an attempt to recognize that things like that happen. And to the extent things happen, then here's the next step. You know, yes, you can't go out to bid, and somebody has to approve something to be paid immediately. But then there's, for example, maybe disclosure to the board of selectmen, and, you know, there's, you know, there's something like that that occurs. So, we were very concerned about that. And the first draft of the policy did, I think, have some pretty permissive language that's just said, you know, if it's for the good of the town, you can, you know, you don't have to follow this. And we, I think that was something that was a concern, that was addressed. And so, I just want to be clear, you know, Mr. Dewitt was correct in saying, yes, there are thresholds of people who can approve things and who can waive things, but they also do need to be connected to legitimate reasons. And again, this is for the purpose of protecting the town and the taxpayers and the people who are, you know, who are signing off on these things. So, I hope that addresses some of your concern. Chris?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And if I may, Mr. Curley, the ultimate responsibility for what this policy looks like, again, as I said before, is with the nine people that you're looking at on the screen here, right? We all have to vote on it. If the policy said, oh, first select person wants to, you know, reject anything and/or approve anything he or she wants, you know, that's, I won't vote for that, right? So, there'll be things in here, we're all going to have to vote on it. You know, I feel like our committee, I think the role of our committee is to really dig into the really, the nitty-gritty details. Come to you with the Reader's Digest condensed version. You guys read every word if you like. But, you know, having that expertise, you guys can, you know, at least get a gist from us of what this is, you know, voted forward. But certainly, if there's anything in here that you personally don't like, you know, that's why we're all, that's why we're all voting on this. And the other thing that I've said right from the beginning is, any policy we write that everybody likes is a crappy policy. Because if everybody likes a policy, it's a bad policy. Because that means, oh, it's just too easy, right?
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Does anybody else have questions on this? Mr. Walsh?
I didn't watch last night's meeting, so I don't really know what all you guys were talking about. So, I mean, is there some suggestion that we're supposed to have three bids for everything?
I can respond to that. We do, our existing policy, there are some state laws around bidding at certain thresholds. And our existing policy does in fact have thresholds where we are supposed to get multiple quotes before we spend money, and obviously pick the best quote or bids for projects or purchases over a certain dollar amount. So, yes, that is the expectation. And, you know, there were, I think that's where some of the questions arose last night, so. You know, I think part of what's, part of what is getting reexamined in this new policy is, you know, are those thresholds at the right level, or are they practical, et cetera? But, yes, we do. But, but yes, we do in fact have, have policies around. Getting quotes and bids, some things are exempted, for example, professional services, you know, we don't choose a lawyer. Or an auditor by, you know, picking the cheapest one necessarily, there are other considerations, so there are carve-outs from it, but for. Many of the, you know, the town's purchases, those, those policies do apply. And Jared, if I misstated any of that, please correct me.
I'm excited to read the new policy. I'm, I'm telling you, I'm really, it's been a long time coming and I'm excited to read it. I actually wanted to, and Mr. Curley was involved with the Smith Richardson project review, how it applies to building committees. Specifically. And that's really interesting, what Mr. Schmidt said, is what people should be penalized or whatever, because, I don't know. People spend money they shouldn't, should the building committee members be, have to identify the town for it? But these are all interesting questions. I mean, Mr. Curley, did you receive three bids on everything that, I mean, you're the chair, did you receive three bids on everything up at Smith Richardson?
I'd have to go back and check, but I, I know that we had a very, we were very strict with our thresholds. We, I do believe that everything that was done through the general contractor was part of the overall bid. And any change orders. That would not fall, fall into that policy, or. Fall into that category were treated the same way, so. If something was $3,000 or less, it would be, it could be approved by the chair. If it was between 3 and 10,000, it needed to be approved by. A subcommittee, and, and we tried to follow the same spirit. Within the confines of the general contractor bids and, or, or change orders. And then for anything outside of that, that were, that was done through regular purchases, yes. Mr. Foley in purchasing was very strict in applying, making sure that the three bid. Three bids for anything over 3,000 was applied.
Well, that's good. So you think it was followed up, up, up at Smith Richardson?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to, again, I, I, I don't want to make this a big discussion about Gould Manor, but I think, Mr. Walsh, the reason this one got a little. Had some hair on it, if you will, was because. There was, the scope grew a little bit, and, you know, there was a remediation project in fields, and then when, you know, bathrooms and fences got added. You know, the questions that arose were around kind of those discrete additional expenses and whether those were bid out properly. I, I think, I didn't watch the meeting.
It, it's interesting that, you know, because, I mean, I've had questions, and Mr. Curley, I think you did a good job up there, it's a beautiful spot. I will tell you that there seemed to be some scope creep up at that project, I mean, I don't remember there being a fire pit. That was there, I don't remember there being a starter's hut. From what I understand, there's been all sorts of wiring and stuff run for scoreboards up there, now that we're talking about scoreboards. And, you know, that's, I have a big problem with scope creep and all this stuff. And I think that we, when we're drafting this purchasing policy, it should formally apply, and we should have specific rules to guide a building committee. So, I think the committee should properly direct, I mean, whoever devising that, you guys should, should address that. I know the select, you know, so, and, and I don't, I mean, we could talk about this all night.
I, I will tell you right now, the, the policy doesn't specifically address the activities of building committees, so I, I'm not sure that's. You know, that might be something off to the side, Jim, I, I think, you know, the way I, you know, the building, a building committee and the things that are bid out as part of a large project should be. I think follow the same policy that, you know, that, that the town follows, you know, generally. The, the draft now does, does not contemplate sort of the activities of a building committee, or, you know, potential liability by building committee members or anything like that, and, and I don't think that would be typical. At least, you know, from what we've seen from Joe and from what we've seen. You know, in other policies that we've seen, so if there's a desire specifically and concerns around building committees and how that's handled, and I. You know, let's all acknowledge, there's, you know, we've got a big waterfall likely to be handed to us with a lot of different projects on it, and. You know, if that's a specific concern that. You know, that, that this board has, or someone has, I think it's, it's probably. You know, Chris has his hand raised, I think it's outside of the scope of this purchasing policy, because that's not what this was designed to address, but, Chris, do you have a?
I, I, okay, I, I just want to say, I have a concern about it, and I think we have a lot of building that's gonna about to start happening, and a lot. Purchasing because of all the free money the federal government's giving every community. And we have a lot of big projects coming up. A lot of them. From stuff at the sewer treatment plant, to the, the toxic cleanup that's happening, and a lot of things that, some of the art money is going to be paying for. And I think that we, as a committee, as a financed. Board of Finance should get some type of. Policy in that regard, and, and I'm not against not having a building committee, but hiring somebody to be that, that, do that role. So that we could sue them if something goes wrong. And there would be insurance policies. That would protect us. And performance bonds and things like that. So I just think that we should, with all the stuff that's about to happen over the next. Two to five years, start thinking about that, if this policy's not gonna address it.
I, I want to let, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that the policy won't address it, I'm, I'm, there's not a, a section of the policy that, you know, is entitled building committees, per se, so. I don't, what, what the building committees do is, is generally, in, in terms of, you know, bidding and quoting and how they spend money, should. Most of that should fall into what the purchasing policy covers, but Chris, do you have any, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean. This, this purchasing policy should address anything we buy for ARPA, listen, we all sat in a room and approved ARPA funding. But this policy will guide the individual purchasing, you know, of, of an individual part, for, for an individual project, right? The difference between, and, and I don't disagree that we need a robust building committee process, whatever. But the big difference between a building committee and a purchasing policy is a budget. We handed Mr. Curley a budget and we said, don't violate this budget. Now, that didn't mean that he could go buy whatever he wanted and not put a roof on the place, right? But would, but, but he still had a budget. Purchasing policies for all intent and purpose are unconstrained, are, are unconstrained buying. We tell the purchasing department, go buy a furnace. And they say, oh my God, you know, with, with, with the way, you know, purchasing is right now, it's gonna cost $50,000, okay. You know, we don't, we don't budget it that way, right? So this policy is, is, is for, you can look at it this very simplistic ways. This is to, to control any kind of, you know, unconstrained spending. Building committees are constrained, are constrained with a budget, still need rules. And for individual purposes, this purchasing policy will, will. Not augment a building committee, but, but give guidance to a building committee, maybe not overall guidance, but at least individual purchasing guidance.
Mr. Walsh, is that helpful to you, or do you have, you have any follow-ups?
I, I guess it is, I, I do think we need some type of policy, financial policy, stricter in regards to either building committees, or figure out what, what process we're gonna follow going forward. There's just too much spending that's gonna be happening over the next two to five years. Way, lots of money, and if we're gonna do it correctly, we should address it as a board, so that we know how we're going forward and work with the administration on it.
Okay, thank you for that, maybe one of the things we can do, you know, I think. It, it's clear we need to get a draft of this policy out to this board for comment, and we will try to do that. You know, as, as soon as practical, as soon as it's, you know, reviewable, and as soon as the town has, has provided its input and we have a, a working draft. You know, we will not, you know, get it out to this board to vote on two days before a meeting or anything like that, we'll give everybody adequate time, but. Yeah, I think maybe, maybe the right answer is, we look at this and then, you know, if this is an, an issue that. You know, if, if there's a belief that we have to supplementally take up guidance or a poli, uh, policy or something on. You know, building committees, or large projects that is not covered in, in the policy, then, you know, then we can do that. But I, I think we should sort of look at, look at what this does, because I'm sort of with Chris, I think that. You know, the, the purchasing policy, building procedures in general, they do guide what's gonna happen, even within the scope of a large project, so. You know, and I, I think the Gould Manor thing, again, it, questions got raised on it because. There was one project that turned into something else, and I think, as I understand it, again, not having watched the meeting, the questions were around additional items that were added, and. You know, were those, you know, bid out properly, you know, how, how did, you know, et cetera, I, I don't want, I don't want to belabor that, but I, I think that was the issue, so. Your point is taken, you're right. In saying that there's a lot of spending that's coming up. That money should be, the stewardship over that money is, is important to all of our taxpayers and all of us, and, and so. If there are concerns that the board has. You know, we can, you know, I welcome anyone who wants to. Take that up, take on that mantle and, and, you know. Help work through that issue as, as Mr. DeWitt and I did on the purchasing policy, I, I think that would be great, so. Are there additional questions on, for Ms. Saxel, or on this? On the status of the DPW audit report? Looks like, no?
Oh, um, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Walsh?
Sorry, we got so dug in on this one issue for the last half an hour, forty minutes, that I forgot that I had a question in regards from Ms. Saxel. On a whole different area of the report. And. And some of this is just information, not what's kind of currently being done, because I was a little confused. Maybe I should need to talk to Mr. Santifani about it. Let's see, it's in regards to page like 12 of the report, it's TG1, BM1. And. And. Page fifteen, SH1. I guess the question is. Question is. Yes, on. All the equipment that they have, and things that people use on a day-to-day basis, like. Chainsaws, weed whackers, blowers, all their stuff, all the stuff that's in this tool shed. And I know there's a, a recommendation that they should be, like, do an annual inventory. But there doesn't seem to be a policy. I'm hoping Mr. Marsilio would be here, maybe we should take it up with him. On, how does like, how do they check that equipment out? How does it get returned? Because there's been allegations over the last several years that. We're using too much of it, things are disappearing. And this goes back to, you know, at least two years, maybe three years. And we're buying, having to replace too much stuff, so there, there doesn't seem to be a policy in regards to like, what people use. Does it get checked in at the end of the day? What happens when something breaks? So a chainsaw breaks. Who like, checks that out of inventory? And says, like, some supervisor says, yeah, it's broken, throw it away, I'm gonna mark it out of inventory. Like, is, is there such thing, Connie, that you know of, because. Joe kind of talks about it slightly, about doing reconciliation of physical inventory and, like, TG1 on page 12. A little bit of BM1 on page 13 in regards to building maintenance, and then on page 15. On SH1, in regards to the public works, which is bigger stuff, I, I understand that, on that, that, that's, you know, obviously paving stuff, snow plowing. But, you know, stump grinding, but, you know, and, and the stuff that they're talking about on that last one is bigger stuff, concrete products, catch bases. You know, cement, grass seed, chainsaws. But I guess I'm not talking about as much there, but i- is there a process for how that stuff is checked out on a daily basis by our employees? Is put back at the end of the day? And if something is broken, it's, someone above them is looking at it saying, determining whether it should be repaired or, or thrown away, and. And then keeping an inventory?
Yes, they do keep extensive inventories and inventory lists at the DPW garage, there are various locations that are inventoried, there's a parts room that is inventoried. And there is a parts room supervisor who's in charge of that, and he has a computerized inventory system. Which logs in items as they're received, he logs them out as they're being used. There is a tool, store room, which is also maintained by the parts room supervisor, keeps it locked at all times, would not be used. No one's allowed access to the room unless granted permission and supervised by the parts room supervisor. Each truck has its own inventory of tools that are maintained on each truck. The supervisors of those divisions. Do a regular inspection of, and inventory of the parts that are on those trucks. And they, uh, uh, review the condition of the item to make sure it's safe for handling for the employees. And they do this on a regular basis, and I've been asking them periodically to. Hand in their inventory sheets to me so I can review them and make sure that they are keeping track of, of items, to make sure that. They're properly logged in and out and nothing's lost. You know, pil, or pilfered. And they're required, the, the big stuff is required to be inventoried, a regular physical inventory with a count every, every 12 months.
Okay, so if there's this whole inventory system that they have, why is Joe saying it's gotta be done at least annually? Because there's just, there's been no policy, they've been doing it, but there's been no policy, is that the issue? He, he makes it seem as though he went in there and wanted to.
Right, there was no formal policy documented, uh, previous to the independent audit, and what we did was, I sat down with the supervisors. And we. Completed a formal inventory policy. Documenting what they needed to do, when they needed to do it, how they had to do it, and who they had to, had to report it to. So we did document a formal inventory policy, and then I did do an inventory audit. And I reviewed the, the manner of how they were conducting their inventory, how they were tracking things, logging them in. I traced items that they purchased to what was logged in their inventory system. I looked at the items on the shelves to make sure the item was physically located there. And they had a, a good security system where no one was able to access the room without supervision. So, there, there is a system in place.
Great, thanks, thanks, Mrs. Saxel, I, I just, when, when I was reading it, it wasn't seeming like, it seemed like nothing was going on, and that, now he was just asking that it be done yearly, so it makes it. Thank you for the background. Adding substance to what, what's actually going on, thank you.
Quick, quick follow-up to Mr. Walsh's question, Ms. Saxel, when, when the invento, when the inventories were done. Did we end up writing a bunch of stuff off? Did we find that stuff that disappeared?
No, I did not find anything like that, thank goodness.
So the audits were conducted proper, the inventories, the inventories were conducted properly and they didn't identify that anything had gone missing?
Correct, correct, no, they, they pretty much buy as needed, they don't over purchase, they don't carry, you know, more than what they need. It was very, it's a small, actually, inventory room, and it was neatly organized, and everything had inventory numbers. That correlated to their inventory system. And they, they seemed to have a pretty good system in place when I went to review it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Matola?
Yeah, thank you, just, just a one follow-up, Connie, if, if you will, so you gave us the list of what's been fully implemented. I thank you for, for that, and I guess my question is. So, items are fully implemented. Did you, ha- have you been able to do any follow-ups or, I guess. Subsequent audits? To. Or I guess subsequent audits to, um, to, to make sure that what has been deemed fully implemented, that, that departments are actually, um, complying with what we have deemed to be fully implemented?
Uh, yes, I have, um, the most recent was I did, uh, an audit of the boat waitlist. And we, uh, I worked with the arena manager, we cleaned up a lot of items on that. Actually, that's one of my draft reports, that's waiting to be finalized. Um, I did a completeness test on the boat slips in comparison to the revenue. Um, I followed up on, on very, I, I follow up pretty much on every recommendation in the, that's been listed up, the other matrix. And, um, yeah, I've been having conversations with people at Solid Waste and Recycling. I've been reviewing their process, how they've been doing things. Um, so yeah, I have been following up on a regular basis. And pretty much, uh, you know, as long as there's a good policy and procedure in place, as long as we have strong internal controls, you know, I feel comfortable that I don't have to keep going there every three months to, you know, check over and look over their shoulders to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. But, um, everybody's been very, uh, as I said, positive and receptive and made a lot of friends at DPW as a result, so.
Okay. And so would it be fair to say that the plan is moving forward that you will on a regular basis?
I, I would, I would continue. I would like to continue, yes, on a regular basis to, uh, you know, and again, as time permitting, continue to do, um, internal audits and reviews and so forth.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, thank you. Thanks.
And you made friends, Connie. Everyone loves an auditor.
That's right, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Um, okay, I, I think we're almost ready to move on. I just wanna ask one final question. Ms. Saxel, have you, um, have you considered doing, um, an audit similar to what Mr. Santifanti did? Just for, you know, a continued time period? So he picked a bunch of transactions and kind of looked at bidding and quoting and all that stuff. And, you know, he found a lot of stuff and obviously the time period that he did it was, you know, twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen. Is, is it on your agenda to, um, uh, you know, given the level of findings that we had back then? Um, and that this was clearly a, a risk area several years ago? Um, would that be something that would be on your, uh, agenda to revisit?
Yes, I, I certainly could put that on the agenda. Perhaps once we implement the new purchasing policy, then I could, you know, conduct a sample to make sure that we're in compliance with the, uh, terms and agreements as outlined in the new purchasing policy. Uh, that would definitely be, I have done audits like that in the past under the old policy and had findings and recommendations at that time as well.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, my, I mean, you've done a lot of great stuff here, I think. And then I realize you get requests to do things from various places, but, um, you know, doing a risk assessment and figuring out, you know, th- this is an area where we know stuff went wrong and we know that, you know, e- even if unintentionally people didn't understand policies, et cetera, we've, we've had a history of issues in the past. Um, it'd probably be a good thing to revisit at some point.
Definitely.
All right. If, um, if, so is the board, uh, is the board have any further questions on this? I think we're good. Okay. So before we, um, move on to item five, I just wanna make sure, um, I see, I see one person in the WebEx that's, uh, here by phone and I just wanna make sure that there are no members of the public who, um, wanna make public comment. If, um, if there's a member of the public who wishes to make public comment and you are, um, you are dialed in, can, you're invited to do so now, you just, you have to, uh, hit star six to unmute yourself. Okay. Doesn't sound like we have any takers on that. All right. So I'm gonna move on to item five on the agenda to hear, consider and act upon the draft minutes of October fifth, October twenty first, November sixteenth and December seventh, at the seven PM meeting and December seventh, eight PM meeting. Uh, can I have a motion to put this on the table? Mr. Walsh, seconded by Mr. DeWitt. Um, okay, the motion is before us. Because these minutes cross dates where we've had different members on the board, um, because I know I was absent at one of these meetings, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we vote on the meetings separately or, or maybe in buckets because at, at least some of us need to abstain from, from, uh, from, I think, all of these. So for those who were at the meeting, are there any comments on, um, on the October fifth minutes from the board? No comments? Does, uh, someone wanna make a motion to accept, accept these minutes? Mr. Walsh, Mr. Matola, all in favor? Uh, I, uh, Mr. Testani, do you have your hand up?
Half abstain, I was absent.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. All right. So that would be, um, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Matola, Mr. DeWitt and Ms. LeClaire and Ms. Marmian in favor and the remainder of the board abstains. Okay. Um, October twenty first.
Could I interrupt one second and recommend we, um, dismiss Ms. Saxel?
Um, oh, sure. Ms. Saxel, you are, I, how terrible of me. First of all, I cannot believe I did not thank you. Um, thank you very much for a terrific presentation. You were great and, um, really on behalf of everyone, thanks for all the work that you do. Thank you. And, uh, you're free to, you can stick around here about minutes, but you're free to go if you like.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, and feel free to contact me if you need anything. I'm here for you. All right. Have, take care. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Connie.
Thanks, Connie.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate that. All right. So we were on October, uh, twenty first. Um, any comments from the board on the October twenty first minutes? Okay, seeing none, uh, motion to accept the October twenty first minutes. Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. DeWitt, um, all in favor. Okay, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Matola, Ms. LeClaire, Ms. Marmian, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Testani, uh, Ms. Charlton abstains and Mr. Stark and Curly abstain. Okay, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, any comments? Okay, motion to accept the minutes of November sixteenth. Mr. Walsh, seconded by Mr. LeClaire, all in favor. Okay, Ms. Marmian, Ms. LeClaire, Mr. Matola, Mr. DeWitt, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Testani? Did I get you? And Mr. Walsh?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, so that was November sixteenth. So December seventh, uh, the two meetings, we can, we can take a motion. Um, a- any comments on either? I think we were all here for, for both of those meetings. Any comments on either of those minutes? Mr. Curly?
Yeah, ju- two nits on the, uh, the Board of Finance meeting. On item six, to hear and consider, um, the, the bonding resolution, it's just a typo. Uh, second line containment should be contaminants.
Okay.
And then the next nit was, um, in item, near the end of item six, um, on, I don't know, it, it's not page numbered here, but there's a reference to Fairfield Little League as being their, uh, group that previously renovated that field. And just making sure the record's correct, um, it was Fairfield American Little League, so.
Okay.
Those are my two nits.
Okay. Uh, any, Ms. Marmian?
Thank you, um, Madam Chairwoman. I, I'm gonna recommend actually, um, or I would make a motion to actually, um, table these notes. Um, table the minutes because I looked through them and I don't feel that, again, on item six, which goes into Gould Manor, the substance of the discussion that this board had isn't, isn't detailed. Um, there's, what's noted is Mr. Bremer's explanation of, of why he was coming forward with his bond request. Um, and then there was a motion made to suspend the meeting because we had the paving meeting. And then we came back and all that's really said is that the original motion carried unanimously. To me, we had a very rich discussion. We talked a lot about, y- y- you know, the project, the timing. We talked about concerns in terms of wanting more backup, more detail. And I'd like to see that captured. So I'm gonna make a motion to table this, um, table these minutes until Ms. O'Brien could perhaps, um, add to the minutes.
Um, Mr. Walsh, are you seconding that or do you have a comment?
I do have a comment. Um, and the comment is, and this always comes up at these board meetings, I mean, I don't know whether we want it verbatim. We could do a transcript of the meeting. Um, but, you know, I will say, and you, everyone here can look it up. Robert's Rule says you just have to record the votes, not a transcript and not specificity in regards to what one member wants put in, in, in the minutes. So that's what it calls for. So if we're gonna make Ms. O'Brien start getting into verbatim, uh, minutes, we're gonna be spending a hell of a lot of money and she'll probably quit because of the amount of work she does for the town other than this. Um, so it's, it's, she's been doing a very great job and I, I don't know, you know, I mean, do you have one sentence or one comment by one member you wanna put in? Or are you asking her to basically go back and redo her job?
I'm, I'm asking for, um, a more balanced, basically. I certainly would not expect her to write verbatim. But there were aspects of that discussion, Mr. Walsh, that I feel strongly should be captured in writing as part of the written, uh, record. That's why I'm asking us to table, um, this item for now, um, so that we can find some of that balance.
If we're gonna get to this level, then we're all gonna be going back on things we want to go back on. And that's never what this board has done before. And it's, it's never has been that way. And our chair knows that. And we've never had this issue really come up before, ever before. And we're really gonna get into that level of detail. I think we better bring Ms. O'Brien back into us and explain the level of detail that we want our clerk to be taking minutes of. Should it be every single person and the substance of every single quote that they have? And this is just, it's just ridiculous. They're, they're minutes. People can go watch Fair TV anytime they want. Robert's Rules doesn't require it. I'm suggesting that, I'm not gonna vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Curly. I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you off. Uh, Mr. Curly?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I do agree that Robert's Rules doesn't re- require anything more than pretty much a vote count. Um, but I also think that there's a, um, middle ground that we can strike to, uh, capture uh, a little bit more color that would allow anyone from the public who's not watching, uh, a two and a half hour, uh, Fair TV broadcast or a replay. Um, a lot of people do go to the minutes to try and understand, uh, what took place in the meeting. Um, and I, and I do believe that, uh, Ms. O'Brien as Recording Secretary has the capability to do that. I've seen her in action for a number of years and I think she's excellent at what she does. Um, and I also think as Ms. Marmian is the Secretary of the Board, she can ask, uh, for a little bit more color. And I think Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Marmian can connect between now and next meeting. Uh, and they can figure out what level of detail is appropriate and bring it back to the board, uh, if this is tabled.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. Uh, Mr. Testani?
Y- yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Just wanna echo and dovetail off Mr., what Mr. Walsh had to say. I think that, number one, we, uh, as public, uh, you know, publicly elected officials have a right to be able to a- address any questions we may get from residents. But at the same time, we can't record every single word or ask Ms. O'Brien to go back like Mr. Walsh alluded to. That's one. Two, I do think, s- speaking of Robert's Rules, that I believe if it's, something is up for a table, I don't believe it could be discussed. I think it either has to be seconded and then voted on or not voted on. I'd, I'm not, I don't have Robert's Rules in, in front of me, but I'm pretty sure that's the, that's the protocol. So when a table is brought up for, as a motion, I believe it has to either be seconded and then voted on without discussion or not voted on, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. You know what? I, I'm not gonna swear, I think you're right. Uh, I, I have read Robert's Rules, I haven't, I don't have them in front of me. Um, I, I appreciate everyone's comments. Um, so I, and I, and I think, uh, you know, we're either gonna go one of two ways on this. So why don't I just, does anybody wanna second Ms. Marmian's motion? Mr. Curly?
I would like to second.
Pardon me?
I would like to second the motion to table.
Okay. So there was a motion to table, um, the minutes of December seventh, specifically the seven PM meeting, um, until, uh, a future date by Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. Curly. Um, in, all in favor of that, uh, motion to table? Okay, I'll, I, um, so Mr. Stark, Mr. Uh, Matola, Mr. Curly, Ms. Marmian, Ms. Charlton. Um, I, I realize we're supposed to do this without comment. I just, um, and I appreciate everybody's comments anyway. I just want to, uh, be respectful to our secretary and I do agree that we don't have to get into verbatim on the minutes. But if, if there's a strong objection to this, I, I wanna be respectful to our, um, our, our members here.
Well, since you're taking a vote, Ms. Chairwoman, I'd like, like a recorded, I'm voting no.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. So I, I, I mentioned who voted yes, um, and no, those opposed would be Mr. Testani, Ms. LeClaire, Mr. Walsh, and Mr. DeWitt, did you vote?
I voted in favor of tabling.
You voted in favor of tabling? Okay. All right. So the motion carries, um, six, three. Um, and thank you, Jack. I thought I was gonna get through this meeting without a presque, procedural screw-up, but apparently not, so, um, all right.
I don't know, if I could make a suggestion, and I don't know how this fits with the rules, but, um, I, I, I very much don't wanna burden Ms. O'Brien with verbatim transcripts and, and, and I, and I don't wanna expose her to having make, having to make value judgments about what was said that was important and what wasn't. Um, on the other hand, if we members want to insert something in the record, uh, in, in a timely fashion, say by the end of this week or within the next seven calendar days, and then the minutes are adjusted accordingly and then, and then further subject to a vote, that would seem like a good process to me. Right? Uh, if Ms. Marmian wants to note comments she made on last week's, uh, on last month's Gould Manor bond resolution, for example, and, and we all believe that her comment is factually representative of what she actually said in the meeting, then I don't see why we wouldn't approve that. That, that seems like a good way to go forward. But I, but again, I, I, I really seriously think that good points were raised about why the, why Ms. O'Brien shouldn't be tasked with, uh, capturing everything we say.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. And I.
Are we saying, uh, are you saying, Mr. Starkey, that you wanna have verbatim transcripts?
I'm thinking. That's what it sounds like to me. That's what, that's what he just said.
But we can have her do a transcript?
No. I said the. Twice that I don't want her to do a verbatim transcript. And I don't wanna subject her to doing anything that subjects her to having to do value judgments about what was important or what wasn't.
Madam Chairwoman, as a point of order, this issue's already been voted on and discussed. And so therefore I think we should move on.
Yes. Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Testani. Let's move on. Um, so, uh.
As a point of information, um, are individual members allowed to speak to?
As a point of information, um, I, are individual members allowed to speak to Ms. O'Brien and insert what they want?
So, I'm gonna, so Ms. Marmian is, is our Board Secretary, um, I think the suggestion was that Ms. Marmian was going to raise this concern. I'm not, I don't want to speak for you, Sheila, were you planning to raise the concern and ask her to, to, um, ca- to, you know, on her own, capture more of the substance of that discussion?
That was my plan, um, because, and again, I just want to make clear, Mr., um, what Kevin said, it's not to just get what I said in there, that's not my point. There was a lot of good discussion and even recommendations, um, in fact, Mr. DeWitt made the point that, you know, in the future, we would like to get the, the, uh, the point document, uh, as backup in terms of, you know, this is why we're proposing something, so that we would have more meat to, to deal with in terms of making a decision. I, and that was a recommendation made to the administration. I think that should be captured so that, you know, it's a follow-up that we can therefore follow up on. So, um, you know, I'm open to whatever process, you know, people think will work best. I'm not doing this to add work on, I just want to capture some of those key discussion points.
It just seems odd that you're the Secretary, but it's you that wants to add specific things into. It's like you're the one who's the Secretary who has access to Prue O'Brien, and-
Mr. Walsh, this is not-
You want to put in, I'm in the middle of speaking, Sheila. I let you speak. It just seems odd that you're the one who wants specific things put in, but yet you're the only one who can communicate with Ms. O'Brien. Um, I mean, if this is the way it's really gonna go, I mean, first of all, it's really now making this whole Gould Manor thing seem more political than I thought. I didn't watch last night's meeting.
Born a boiter.
But now it just seems like it's even more of that.
Yeah.
So, so I, I, I just gotta say, this whole thing, it's gonna make this whole minute thing, I mean, we better start putting a lot more time towards minutes, because I got a feeling this is gonna be coming up every meeting.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Walsh. I, uh, listen, I, I understand everybody's points. I do, I just do want to acknowledge one thing Sheila said, which I, a point I picked up, which was kind of important, um, I thought was important. If we've asked the administration for a follow-up on something, I do think that's a good thing to document in minutes, and, and I will personally, Mr. Walsh, I had this discussion with you recently, I, you know, I was reminded, for example, that we had asked Mr. Schmidt for copies of analyst reports, and I, I was reminded of that for reading the minutes, so I, I think there are certain things that, you know, if we want to make sure the minutes are complete with, with respect to matters like that, I, I, I think that's a good idea. I do appreciate the concerns. I don't think anybody here is asking for a transcript, and, and that would be a dumb idea, frankly, so. Um, I hope, uh, you know, I respect all the, the points of view, um, Mr. Testani, did you have something else to add?
The only thing I want to add, and it sort of alludes a little bit to what Mr. Walsh was referring to, is outside of this vote that we just had on this one set of minutes, what, uh, the, si- a similar feeling to what Mr. Walsh was conveying is we're starting a slippery slope in terms of minutes, like where does it end? What, what minutes are gonna be good enough? You know, we, we just voted, uh, you know, six was, was six-three, I, I think, right? That those particular minutes are gonna be tabled. Now what? Is it the next minutes aren't good enough, and who's gonna have to go back and redo those? You know, it's, where does it end, is the question, in, in my mind. I don't want, I don't want to speak for you, but that's, that was sort of the, the avenue I thought you were going down. Am I, am I right with that, Mr. Walsh?
Correct.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Walsh, do you want to respond?
No, that is exactly the area that I'm, I'm, I'm talking about, and, you know, we've never really made um, minutes a political thing, but to me, my opinion is this member, that's where we're heading. And we'll just have to start, you know, everyone's gonna have to read their minutes a little closer and start picking and choosing what they want brought up from the last meeting. And if I say something and it's not in there, I guess I'm gonna have to ask, and I'll have, but I'll tell you, I'll be ready. I'll have the paragraph ready, that I'll read it, and Ms. O'Brien can take it verbatim, and we'll sit here for an hour every, every meeting, and we'll start having minute meetings.
Okay, I, I just want to, um, acknowledge, we did, except for this, just approve without any comment, three other sets of minutes, and, and I, I don't think that's gonna be the case. I understand the concern, but I think this board is, is, uh, you know, uh, you know, can, can handle the approval of minutes without too much of an issue, uh, going forward, so. Um, we voted on this item, and, uh, thank, thank you, everyone, for your comments. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, uh, if there are any que- any comments on the December 7th minutes for the, um, 8:00 PM meeting.
I didn't read them the way I should now. I should re, I guess I should reread them, see whether I want more stuff put in.
Uh, Ms. Marmian, did you have comments on those minutes?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the board having this conversation. Um, and, um, I would just like to say one thing, and I think it's important to be said, that Mr. Walsh, with all due respect, this is not political for me. I am not asking to add substance into the meeting notes for political purposes. I want that to be very clear, and I actually have to say, I actually have to say I really resent you bringing that up, because it's just patently false. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marmian. Um, any, any comments on the December 7th, 8:00 PM minutes from the board? Okay, um, does, uh, can I have a motion to approve the meetings, the minutes from the, the joint meeting on December 7th at 8:00 PM? Uh, Mr. Matola, seconded by Mr. Walsh, uh, all in favor of approving those minutes? I, okay, it is unanimous? Thank you. All right.
Ma- Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt, yes?
I'm just reading a note in the chat. I don't know if you can open your chat from Prue. She's asking for some clarity about what you're asking her to do.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, so Ms. O'Brien, I'm gonna, um, suggest that Ms. Marmian, um, contact you, uh, or that you connect with Ms. Marmian after the meeting, if that works. Thank you, Jared, for pointing that out. I was not, uh, noticing the chat. Okay, uh, moving on to item six, to hear, consider and act upon any communications. Uh, Mr. Schmidt, do you have anything uh, for us?
I, uh, no, I actually, I have a clarification to something that, uh, I was, that I said earlier when Mr. Walsh had asked me about uh, the burden of, uh, retrieving, uh, procurement documents related to fill pile, and I, and I had referenced the fill pile, and my, my work in that, and the burden of me was not related to, to the fill pile, and I mistakenly said that it was related to Penfield and, uh, and the activities there, so I, I just wanted to correct the record there, because people were probably looking at me like, what? What the heck are you talking about?
And, and the minutes would be wrong too, Jared.
I have no comment to that.
All right.
Yes, you do.
Noted, noted, um.
Jared, call me later with your comment.
Noted, Mr. Schmidt. Um, any other communications?
No.
Okay, um, Mr. DeWitt has something.
I just, uh, you know, next week we're discussing the, um, Capitol Planning, and I was wondering if we could get the actual data s- more sooner than later, please? Because I would like to have more than a, you know, little time looking at that. That's a pretty big document, documents.
So my goal is to get that information to you, uh, get that plan to you guys on Friday. And this is, uh, you know, this is a, it's a workshop, so there's no, there are no votes being taken, and so, um, you know, we, we plan on getting that out to you guys on Friday.
Okay.
Friday morning or Friday night?
Friday.
Okay, all right, Friday. Um, anything else? All right, well, thank you, everyone. Uh, so we'll move on to item seven, which is to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Curly, seconded by Mr. DeWitt, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.